Good evening and welcome to our Committee of the Hall meeting for December 10th, 2018. For those of you who are in the audience, if you want to follow along, we have agendas outside of the door on two your right. You can follow there. And anyone watching at home, you can go to our website, lavonia public schools dot org, highlight over the Board tab, and you can follow along our most interesting agenda for tonight. Anyone who wants to address the Board, there are blue slips also out on the table. If you want to fill one out, and you can drop it off to us, and you can address the Board. This is our Committee of the Hall meeting where you will hear more in-depth discussion on the issues that have already been brought to the Board on at least one occasion. But tonight is our meeting where we dig deeper into all of these issues and determine whether or not they are ready to go on our regular agenda, which would be at our voting meeting next Monday. So if you're here to listen to a lot of talk, tonight's the night to be here. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with Item One, Audience Communication. I don't have any blue slips. I don't see anybody rushing to the table. So I'm going to assume we don't have any this evening. So we'll go right into Item Two, Committee of the Hall. I do not have anything. Mrs. Oakley, is there anything that we need to add?
President Johnson, we do not have anything under Committee of the Hall this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Then we'll drop down to Item Three, Building at Site. And I will turn it over to our Chair, Mr. Centers.
Why, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Special Delivery Centers.
That's right.
Thank you.
Well, this evening, we have five items. We're going to begin with Johnson Roofing Project. And joining us today is Mr. Smith from Plant Moran Cressa, as well as Mr. Francis. Mr. Francis, what is going on with the Johnson Roof?
Oh, with the Johnson Roof. Johnson's going to get a new roof pretty soon here, if the Board approves of this, of this plan. So what we're bringing this evening for your information and for your discussion is the Johnson Roof, New Roof Project, which will be year two of what we've been doing via the sinking fund on roofs. Last summer, as you may recall, we re-roofed Holmes Middle School, along with part of the warehouse building here and the transportation building here. So for the summer of 19, we put out to bid the roof and fascia boards for the Johnson Upper Elementary. If you have, and I think yours is in color, maybe not. If it's in black and white, I printed one in color. Red is not good. If you can see.
Wow.
Red, this is from the RTA assessment that they did for us a year ago. And red is the second lowest condition, and it's rated very poor. And as you can see, the vast majority of the roof at Johnson is in red. And actually, there's a couple of smaller spots that are in the even lower failed portion. So we had RTA do a design for us, as they did last year at Holmes. As you recall, we retained their services for design work. And, I mean, we put out to bid for this project in on the 27th of November, the bids were opened up. And we were, actually, please, you're, I think you're happy. I know we were all pretty happy. We had, we had good bid coverage. And I think some of that is, is the timing. We went out earlier this year than we did last year. And some of that is beating the bushes with some of the local firms. So we had good bid coverage. And we were pleased with, with the final number. J.D. Cantler, if you looked in your packet, you'll see J.D. Cantler had the, the low, low responsible bid at $1,484,000 for the actual hard construction. And that came in a couple of hundred thousand dollars less than the other bidders, who were actually in a pretty tight bid bet for themselves. So, and that's, they were very close, but even still, that was a little under what we had budgeted based on our Holmes numbers. Holmes and Johnson are very, very similar projects. It's just that Johnson has a little bit less square footage. So if you notice from the roof replacement cost summary, the budget that we had planned on, based upon the dollar amounts, and this is the one, two, three, fourth page end, on the backside there. The proposed budget was $1,729,000. That was based on the numbers that we, that we had. And the actual is $1,484,000 from J.D. Cantler. You may all be familiar with Cantler. They've done quite a bit of work for the district in repairs, et cetera. And they also did the transportation and maintenance building last summer on that bid. A little bit of background on that is that, that they did not bid on the Holmes project last year. And when we asked them why not in the post-bid interviews, they simply said because of schedule. They had already filled up at that point. So they are a company that is interested in, in working with the district, and they have worked with the district with, with a long history. So with that, as some of the overview, if you have any questions, or Mr. Smith, do you have any other technical pieces? We did do our post-bid interviews. The team followed up. One of the real questions was, why was Cantler so much lower? And there is a little bit of, of concern that maybe they had missed something. But in all the post-bid discussion and questioning, and then I think you guys even followed up beyond that interview to confirm that they did not miss anything. Their number is their number, and they were just being aggressive with, with the number. Anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that was well said.
Thank you.
We did make sure that, that everything was up to par. We had three numbers that were really close right behind it. And, you know, for this guy to be such low, we really took the time, we gave him the time to go back and revisit everything that he did and make sure that he's got all his square footage is correct, his touch base with his suppliers and such, and felt comfortable with us recommending him. And we gave him that time. He appreciated it. Came back, confirmed it was all ready to go. He's, he's based out of Livonia here, so he's very close. RTA has worked with them in the past successfully. We have as well. They've actually done some of the bond work. Even though those haven't been wholesale roof projects, they have been active here on the bond. So the team felt real comfortable recommending them for the work.
And Mr. Smith, we're carrying an eight percent contingency. Is that correct?
That's correct. The discussion on the contingency is there's only one, one project. And we want to make sure that we have a reasonable contingency in case there are any unforeseen incidents.
Roof, roof, roofs. Mrs. Travis.
Thank you. I see that it says that they will not be handling the removal or replacement of the security cameras or any speakers. Is that something we do in-house, or do we need to bring someone in?
We, the LPS will handle that. We did the same over at Holmes with the new cameras, et cetera, that are on the exteriors of the building. We just want to make sure that we secure them and know where they're at, so that we can put them back when, when the summer is over.
Thank you.
I think it's in the best interest of the district to not have a roofer perform that tech, that low voltage work. So it was small dollars. We'll just coordinate it out.
Great. Mrs. Parker.
On the page, it's, it's black and white on ours. I did that, that you just showed us that's red. The, in the key, the last column says RCI. Can you tell me what RCI is?
That's, that's an industry term for roof condition index. And it's a, it's a relative term. It's a, it's a scale. Lower's numbers being, lower performing roofs, higher numbers the better. That's something that RTA, when they did the overall assessment, had created an overall RCI per building. But also, in these diagrams, they've, they've broken it down by area as well, so that you can see, you know, if it was a high school, could we get away with maybe replacing, say, the west wing, when the rest of the school is in good shape? Generally, we've found that the buildings are kind of homogeneous in their condition. You know, they don't have a, a high level of difference. But so the roof condition index is their relative terminology in the roofing industry to rate out a roof.
And on that, on that point, to take you back about a year ago, when the RTA's report came out, what they had done for us was not only show us the RCI by area, but they also gave us a, a combined for the building, a single score that they weighted based upon the area, the size of it, et cetera. Because we didn't want to have a very, very small, with a high RCI, square, square footage area, suddenly boost up what an overall number looked like. So they did a weighted score for us. And that is how we came up with our, rank order, if you will, for the order of doing the roofs. One quick look at Johnson, you can see there certainly are in need.
Right. And for the benefit of the public that's not looking at this sheet, the vast majority of this roof is either in a zero to one year of serviceable life left, or one to three, either failed or very poor. So clearly, this is one of our buildings that we need to, to give serious attention to. The funding source out of this, again, is the sinking fund.
Sinking fund, correct.
Okay. And the sinking fund, again, for those who may not be aware of the funds that we talk about quickly at our table. The sinking fund is, is a fund that our community has approved for replacement of significant dollar items, such as boilers, parking lots, roofs. And we are not allowed to use this fund for anything other than those types of purchases. Good bid coverage is something, again, that we talk about at our table. And again, just for the benefit of the public, what we mean by that is that we, when we went out to bid, we had a good number of folks that were bidding this work. And therefore, we had a good number to compare to one another. If we had only one or two people coming in and bidding a project, we may or may not be sure if we're getting good pricing. But when we say we have good bid coverage, as we did in this case, we had a good number of folks that bid the work, that we are confident that we are having good pricing on this.
And to the district's advantage now, we have, we had good numbers to use for budgeting purposes, because we just did a roofing project a year ago. So the more we do these, the more familiar we'll become with the industry's pricing right now. And, and we'll, we'll be able to expect hopefully a little bit better what should be coming in. And these bids were, in fact, beating those expectations, which we're pleased with. And, and a good firm that came in with, with the number.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Does the roofing come with any type of a warranty? How does that work in the roofing industry?
Yep. So as part of the specifications that supplement the drawings, there is a general warranties section in that specification. In this case, we could have went with 15 years, but the industry standard has now been moved up to 20 years. So all, last year's projects, this year's, and all projects moving forward will have that standard 20-year warranty from the manufacturer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Frank.
Just really quickly, I know that the building we did previous last summer, there were some issues with it. We have, we will work with this contractor to make sure that that doesn't happen again, happen again. That, that was a one-time deal, and this is not going to be the same in terms of, of any of that, right? I mean,
We've taken those precautions.
Yeah, we, you learn from what occurred. I don't want to put that on, on the contractor, per se, saying that they, it's not, for people at home, it seems very cryptic. They, they're, the firm that did last year's project is an incredibly reputable firm. They bid again. If they were a low, low responsible bidder, we would have been more than confident to, to recommend them again. It was a crazy windy storm that occurred, that, that happened. And from that, we have learned to request and require any of the firms to, to attach their tarping in a different method than was used last year. So we want to learn from any of those pieces.
We did spend a fair amount of time doing the lessons learned from last year, talking through the project as part of our school review.
I may have brought it up.
I think it's important for the public to know that you got, that we did. I think that's really important. So thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. On our diagram, we are color-coded. And there's one area, I'm assuming that's in a poor condition?
Show me.
The, the one area that is not in the red.
Yeah, the D, Area D you're talking about?
Area D.
Yes, that, that is still, yes, that's the orange poor. Correct.
Okay. But we're still going to replace that. That's going to be included.
It's a, it's a hundred percent of the, of the roof, and all the fascia panels going around the perimeter.
Are we talking about roughly the same timeframe as Holmes of last year?
It takes a full summer.
Takes, that's, it's going to be the, the, basically.
They'll be using the parking lot. They'll have a large lay-down area. It will, it'll be very similar to Holmes in that sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? All right.
We're going to vote next week?
Yes.
Thank you. Regular.
All right. Moving on to Item B, Commissioning Agent for Nigiero.
Thank you very much. We are bringing as a recommendation, Selinger Associates as the commissioning agent for the project at Nigiero. Selinger has been the commissioning agent throughout the bond work. And the, the bond team and the district has been very satisfied with their work. So we asked Plant Moran Cressa to, to discuss with them in re-engaging for the Nigiero project coming up this summer. I'll let Mr. Smith talk a little bit, very briefly, to remind everyone here and at home, what a commissioning agent does. And, and from there, he can discuss how they do their pricing, because it's not necessarily a, we're very familiar with the architects. You take a percentage of what we're spending, et cetera. It's a little bit different with a commissioning agent.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, for, for those tuning in, or for as a refresher, the commissioning is sometimes an ambiguous term, and not everybody understands exactly what it is. But generally, it's, it's a professional service, for one. And it centers around really primarily the mechanical systems that go in a building, but also a little bit with the electrical systems that interface with those. We're also adding emergency generators to all the buildings, so there's some overlap with that. It also has to do with the building automation systems that we've been installing at all the schools. That's the ability to log on remotely and see how the performance of the systems are occurring, and even adjust them remotely as well. So what they do is, is they will help, they're a, one, they're a peer reviewer of, of drawings. So they'll look at drawings during the design from the mechanical designer, which is Strategic Energy Solutions, and provide peer, peer review comments. They're also a mechanical engineer. So they will look at them, bringing up items that may, they see as, from their experiences, for consideration into the, the design. Similar to what we do with the architectural and stuff, but they're just specialized in that arena. They will also, and primarily at the end of the projects, they're going to go back through and they're going to evaluate those systems. They're going to force them through their normal operation and confirm that they're functioning properly and as designed. If there's deficiencies, they're going to mark them. The team will have to go back and re-evaluate them, fix them where needed, and then they'll be tested. One of the things we've been doing with commissioning agents is also having them come back, 23 months, I'll call it, post, well, 12, 11, and 23 months. And the 23-month being that month right before the more, the initial warranties are, are expired, and have them go back through and test some things out. That way, if there's some things that aren't performing right, that the, that the district sees the benefit of getting those corrected before the warranty period does expire. So when you look at the pricing, they have really two pricing in here, two pricings in here. One is the $8,400, which is the original design construction in that first 11-month warranty review. And then, as we've been doing with all the other schools, adding that 23-month warranty follow-up, which is alternate number one for another $1,500, bringing their, their proposal up to $9,900. This school is very reminiscent of what we did mechanically at Garfield Community School, where we did not do a complete full replacement of the mechanical systems. We did some of the larger systems, the air hangar. We did some of the larger systems, the air handlers, mechanical units, a few split systems here and there. But we did not do the classroom unit ventilators. As such, this, this pricing here is, is dollar for dollar the same as Garfield. It totally makes sense that it should be about that. And they've held the same hourly rates over the years for additional services. So this, in our eyes, is a very fair proposal. They've been doing a good job. They've been responsive. We're actually getting ready to start commissioning some of the work from this past summer here, this week. And so we'll be evaluating those systems further as well. So it's an ongoing thing. It's, it isn't something that just happens once and it's done. They're involved at the beginning, as well as the end, and even after the end.
Comments, questions? So this is a...
I was going to ask the board, this is a relatively low number, even with the, the contingency, or the, yeah, the contingency in it. So, you know, you can certainly, we, we'd like to put it on for next week and, and vote on it. That makes, that makes sense, but it's not above the, the board required to vote.
Any thoughts, feelings?
I'm okay. Just to send it through. I would actually like to see us go ahead and vote on it. It's, 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 it is part of the bond work. We've done so much work with our bond. And we've, and we've hired Selinger to do this work before, I think, just in the, in the... I, I agree with this is the bottom field. We don't have to. But for transparency, I think it's not a bad idea to do so.
Frankly, we're not in a rush for it. I mean, the, the one more week isn't going to change anything on our end. So it's completely up, up to whatever your guidance is and whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, and since it's on the agenda today, people won't wonder why it's not there next week.
Sounds good.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And again, just for the benefit of the public, this is, this is bond, this is coming out of the bond budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And again, this is money that our community approved to be used for the building purposes.
Correct. Yep.
And we'll regular turn down.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item C then, which is purchase of vehicles.
Thanks, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Mr. Terry.
I'd like to bring to you a recommendation for the purchasing of replacement vehicles for the maintenance department. And I'm using maintenance a little bit broadly in this, in this sense, because one of the, of the pickups is actually going to be used specifically in the transportation department. But what we are proposing, pardon me, and this would be a, a general fund purchase, but this is one of the items that we've discussed in trying to be on a cycle of replacement with things like the vehicles, so that we don't have all of them fail at one time. So what we're, what we're bringing forward are four Ford F-250 pickup trucks, three of which would have a, a plow package on them. So that would be three pickup trucks with plows for the maintenance and grounds department. And that would then move out some of their vehicles, and we're going to move those into the three high schools. So Churchill, Franklin, and Stevenson, sort of the, the domino effect would be getting not new vehicles, but newer than what they have. And then the oldest vehicles, we would take to auction to bring back some dollars. There's also in the recommendation, so we had, that's, that's three plows, and then one F-250 without a plow, that would be used by the transportation department. And when I say transportation, I, I don't forget, that means the mechanics as well as the drivers, et cetera. They use that to have to, if a bus breaks down, to drive out to the bus potentially to, to get to sites, and other drivers might be driven out to a site, et cetera. So they've had a traditionally, a vehicle that they need to move around as well. And there are times when, this wouldn't have a plow, but there are times when, when our mechanics also do help push some snow when, when it's all hands on deck. So they would also use some of the plow trucks. So there's four vehicles there. And then, excuse me, we have one, and you see it listed as a T-250 high-roof, long-wheelbase van. So that would be for the Livonia Career Technical Center, the Building Trades Program, which, by the way, the, the teacher, Mr. Tim Martin of that program, as you know, was recently honored as a, as a Teacher of the Year Awards. We're very proud of him. And he has a very old, one of the blue vans, if you're familiar when I say the blue vans. So all the blue vans with these purchases would be no more. We would be replacing all the older blue vans, which have quite a few body concerns, as well as some mechanical concerns. So that, the dollars for the T-250 for the, the CTC Building Trades Program would actually be coming from their added cost dollars. So that would be a career center purchase. We're just putting it through on our recommendation out of one purchase from Gorno Ford through the My Deals Purchase Program. So that is something that, that the Career Center, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Martin have discussed and actually have been talking about for at least a year and a half with, with myself, with Mr. Lau, the need for a replacement of the van. Because for those at home who don't, don't know, the Building Trades Program actually goes off-site to a home and work. So they load up the van, they load up a trailer and go out to a site. And Mr. Martin also uses that same van to head to Lowe's or Home Depot, load up with lumber, load up with equipment, and, and drive to the building, and also drive back to the site. So it, it's a pretty integral portion of his equipment. So that's why they, they would like to use their added cost dollars.
I just want to point out, oftentimes, we're asked what happens to our previous vehicles. So if you look on the opposite of Mr. Francis's memo, you'll see a memo from Mr. Lau that highlights that the 10-year-old vehicles, we will retain. And those are the three that will go out to the high schools. And then the remaining four vehicles will be auctioned off, which is our normal process as we move through this vehicle replacement.
Any questions? Mrs. Parker.
Mr. Francis, the last, the last time that we bought pickup trucks, we were able to, and maybe this is the same purchase, time keeps slipping. There was an issue with the chassis where the, they were going to switch from the one-ton chassis to something else. Maybe we were, we wanted the bigger chassis in order for the...
That was a model year item, if I'm remembering correctly. That was, that was last year, a year ago.
So are we, so these are, don't have quite a, they're not quite as heavy as a truck as the ones that we got last year?
I don't want to speak out of turn on the, on the mechanics of it, because, because I'm remembering the conversation that we had, but it wasn't something specific that I was asked about. If I'm recalling, though, at the time, it was a previous model year because our supervisor of mechanics said, if I had the choice between, I know it's a year model older, it's still new, but they were still using a different chassis on it.
Yeah.
Now, if they've apparently moved away from that, I don't want to speak to their, their, you know, the mechanics of, of the, the new vehicles. But we had purchased the Fords before, and these are, are the Fords again.
Well, I, I'm a Ford gal, so go Ford. I'm all for buying the trucks.
And those My Deal prices are, are actually...
We like all of our local dealerships and support. I'm just looking for the best price.
Sorry.
These are, these are very good prices, though. If you, if you've ever, you know, come across, you know, the, the 150s, they're expensive in their own right. These are the 250s, along with the, the plow packages, and they're still under $40,000.
But we're sure, along with the pricing, that these are going to have the capability to stand up to the abuse that the plow trucks got. And they've been rated, fully rated to, to take on the, the amount of work that we have to use them for.
That, that would be, I, that, that is something that I entrust to our mechanic supervisor and to Mr. Lau. So they, they spec it out and, and come back with the recommended item that they would need for plowing.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Mrs. Parker.
Mrs. Okus, you said we're keeping our 10-year-old vehicles. I assume by that, you're meaning that we're auctioning off the vehicles that are older than 10 years?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Francis, can you remind me what added cost funds mean? I know that's where the CTE, the Career Tech Center truck is coming out of that fund. Can you remind me what, what that funding source is?
So with, with approved CTE programs in the state of Michigan, there is a, a line item because it costs more. The state recognizes that it costs more to run these programs. Because if you think about an automotive program with, with lifts and with vehicles, et cetera, or a Building Trades Program that has to purchase the materials, et cetera, there is an added cost to those programs that the state does fund the district with. Now, it is district dollars, but they're, they're meant to be spent directly with the CTE programs. So at that point, the, the Livonia Career Technical Center needs to allocate those dollars. And generally, talking to Mr. Anderson, he likes to use, sometimes, put together those dollars into a one-time larger purchase. The previous year, there was the, you know, he updated the MAC Lab and the graphic design course. This year, it's the Building Trades Van. And so they like to try to do something that they would otherwise not normally be able to afford by using those dollars for, for the building programs.
Okay. And one last question. You were talking about getting back and forth to the site. How do the students get back and forth to that building site?
The, the students don't go in the van. They, they are responsible for their own transportation. The, the students who go onsite are always seniors, because it's a second-year program. So we have our seniors go driving themselves to, and it's a local site. It's in the district. It's in Livonia. That's been part of the program for many years. When the recession hit 10 years ago, before that, as you may well know, and many at home may well know, we actually built our own homes from the ground up and sold them. After the recession, a program began where they renovated, a partnership with the city, and began renovating buildings. So at this point, they're still doing full gut renovations and getting their experience in that manner.
Okay. So that's, it sounds like, it's not, it is a fabulous combination of, of resources for the city and for the school.
Yeah. So students are responsible to get to, to their, their, their site. That's a three-hour block in the afternoons, and Mr. Martin uses the van to tow the trailer over there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, great. This will be on regular agenda.
That's what we'd request.
Thank you.
Item D will be flexible furniture for Randolph Elementary School. And Mrs. Scott will be joining Mr. Francis.
I'd love to stay for this. Fantastic.
All right, great.
Good evening. So currently, we are in the midst of using the funding from the 2013 bond funds in Phase III of purchasing elementary furniture. So really excited tonight, because this will be the first of 15 schools that will be coming to you to hopefully get your approval to look at making purchases that will, that the committees at the schools have been formed, and they've decided on what kinds of innovative areas that they would like to, to use their funding for. So if you would... Has decided to use their funding in their leveled library. And that's one area. And so down there at the bottom, there's not going to be colored green, but they'll have like two modular chairs with two tables in them. This is all for students. And then they also have an area where there's four, looks like four taller multipurpose-type seating arrangements with higher back. And then, see the little blue thing down there? It's called a scooch. So the best way I can explain is that you can scooch it wherever you need to move it. And so they have all different types of seating arrangements there that they can form into. The little coffee table there that can pull apart. And so two of them can be seated on, and the other two are like little tables that they can use. So they have enough, enough funding to do the leveled library. And then they have, I must have skipped one. I'm sorry.
As she's looking through that, just a reminder that, to the folks at home, I think the, the board probably remembers this. But the, some of the parameters for the flexible furniture was that it was to be used for students, and as many students as possible having access to it. So there is just a small club that used an area, it wasn't meant to go to just a handful of students. It was meant to be as widely spread as possible. And also, this is via the 2013 bond funds.
Yep. Thank you. I skipped one page. The first one was lobby area. And so their lobby area, they have a couple of different rooms off of there that, that students use. And so they wanted to extend into their lobby area. So again, they have a couple of different seating arrangements there. They have four, it looks like four different seats that actually have a place where they can put their Chromebook on and to work from there. They have the taller back, four-piece sectional modular sofa with a table. And then they also have, they're going to get three of the movable stands so that then they can be moved wherever the student happens to be seated in order, again, to be able to, specifically to be able to either write or read or to be able to work on a Chromebook. So, and then, since I already talked about the leveled library, then hallway says cooldown bench. But it's also not necessarily just for cooldown, but also for optional space for students to work. And so the little pull-out underneath, they're able to put in some supplies there. So the working supplies that they would need. So, you know, if there happens to be just one, an extended space outside the classroom, they could send students there. They're usually going to use these for the older students. So this one seemed to be a very popular one, that everyone wanted one outside their room. So, and they decided on these purchases through having a committee from the school and then garnering input from the staff as to how to best use it. So...
One of the things I'd like to mention is that the, the total amount of $37,594.06, that includes freight and setup, that was, that prices through the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, the National IPA. All of the items that we get from IE Interior Environments, which we've used them quite a bit through the bond at this point with the flexible furniture, they are using only manufacturers that are part of that National IPA. So that is contract pricing, consortium pricing, which satisfies the board's requirement to bid. So we, and we have, that is the pricing, as well as a letter on file from IE stating that anything they quote us would only be coming from manufacturers who participate in this pricing program. And those are the prices that the district is getting as a governmental agency.
And the, each one of the schools got a base amount assigned to them, as well as a per-student allocation. So that way, it's a little bit dependent upon not just that you get a certain amount, but also depending upon how many students that you have in your school. And we just used last year's count to help decide that. So they're all in the midst of, of working with the vendors and making some decisions. And again, Randolph is our first school who's ready to go. So...
There are more in the hotbed. Questions? Mrs. Parker.
Are the schools, I know each school gets to decide independently on the area and what they're choosing. But are they working together or collaborating on, on some of the thoughts and ideas and so forth with one another?
What we had done, Mrs. Scott and I had had conversations together, but also with the principals, the elementary principals, and said, what are, what are some of the, just, before you even know what pieces are out there, what are you thinking? Where areas, what are some items that you are interested in? And we went around the room, and there were similarities. Some had more unique ideas than, than what the herd was, was going with. We said, okay, we're going to take those ideas, and we're going to ask for a furniture company to send, to put together a packet of items that, that fulfill those, those ideas in a, in a general sense. So we, we passed that around. So all the principals have a small catalog, things pulled to their specific requests and ideas, whether it be furniture like this, or student mailboxes, which was another idea, et cetera. And then, as the buildings, the principals put together small committees in their building, they share those items. And we said, you're not limited to what you see here, though. You know, if you, if you, you know, want to look at other catalogs, do that. Go online, do that. There's so many manufacturers out there, and many of them will have something that looks similar. If, if... If manufacturer A has something, manufacturer B, who we may have, a company that we work with representing, that can get us the contract pricing, can probably find something similar. So, in that sense, we're working together to try to, it's such a large net, we wanted to shrink it a little bit for them, otherwise, they would have been paralyzed by it being such a large thing to do. So, we've narrowed it for them, but in the meantime, we have not put up fences and saying, you can't get something that's not in this catalog. And I think from that aspect, from what, I'll speak for you because we were together on some of those meetings, what we've seen is, they are using what we've put together, but it's not stopping them from looking elsewhere. Because I know that we had a meeting with one elementary, and they showed us, they pulled up the website and said, you know, we like this. And we said, great, let's find those items. So, that's sort of where we're at. We're trying to help them without pushing items onto them. We just want them to not feel like they're paralyzed in movement because it's just such a big, a big world of furniture out there.
They also have the benefit of the secondary schools. As you know, we're bringing the last one to you this evening from Churchill. And so, we've had a number of purchases relatively unique from one another, and so, that information is also available as schools are making those decisions.
And they visit it. I know some of the people I've talked to, they've gone to another school to take a look, et cetera, just to see what else is out there. But all their spaces are unique, too. So, it's going to, you know...
That's what I was going to say, is each one of them has unique, have, you know, unique circumstances. Some have a room to be able to design, and others just have, you know, small areas. And then, others may not have that and are going to spread it out, you know, within each classroom. So, again, each school's going to be different.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. On the lobby area, it's showing these movable tables. Do they telescope up and down, or are they a uniform height?
You know, I honestly do not know if they go up and down. I would assume they would go up and down just because of the different heights of students, but I would have to ask them for sure if we can tell by looking at...
I can't tell from looking.
I know, but the picture, you can't tell.
I just think it would be better for them if it was adjustable.
We'll get you your answer in the update this week.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Francis, appreciate it.
I'm going to stick around for the next one, Joe.
You are, you are welcome.
I might just be here all night, I don't know.
We don't need to vote on this Randolph, because we've already done flexible furniture.
No, that is for a vote.
No, we do.
It's a 37, yeah, that's something that you need to approve, then we can do the PO. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item E then, and that'll be Churchill Flexible Furniture. Mr. Wilmorg, you've got some information for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Centers. The secondary schools had the good fortune of giving a little head start on our flexible furniture plans, and tonight I bring to you the last of our secondary schools' FFPs, for lack of a better term there. At the study session last week, I described the flexible furniture vision for Churchill High School's Technology Collaboration Room. This evening, I bring that plan to you in a diagram and in colored pictures. Now, the pictures in your electronic packet were partially cut off, and that's why I've also provided you with some hard copy pages for your review before we started here. The Churchill Flexible Furniture Plan fills a large open room with several smaller learning spaces. It provides for a variety of table styles that include desk-type tables, square-top tables, round-top tables, and trapezoidal interlocking tables. Likewise, there's a multiple option of seating, from stools to contemporary chairs, those scooches that were mentioned, lounge chairs in a sofa-like arrangement. The Churchill staff worked with Interior Environments for the design room, for the design of the room and the selection of the furniture. The flexible furniture expenditures are part of Phase Three, part of the Phase Three plan of the 2013 bond to equip secondary schools with creative and flexible learning spaces for students. This evening's request for Churchill totals $50,048.88. Needless to say, the folks at Churchill Land are excited to outfit their special and unique technology collaboration, and I recommend this FFP for further study and review at next week's regular meeting.
Questions? All right. Well, it does, Mr. Johnson.
Just a comment, Mr. Centers. I really like the way you, on the diagram, you were able to break down each area and showed us the furniture that was going into that area.
More credit Interior Environments than me.
They're not here to take the credit, so...
It does flow that way, yes.
And you may recall that you voted on the technology for this room at a prior meeting. And so, the display, the display televisions and the interactive monitors, the projector systems, et cetera, were part of a previous vote that I believe came in either October or November, and that is for this same room.
Certainly will create, I think, in my opinion, the feel of a college campus, so that'll be...
There's a bit of a buzz about the room over there.
With the six large screens surrounded by all this contemporary furniture, you know, credit the brainchild of Superintendent O'Quist and Mr. Klan and Mr. Francis here. It'll be, and Mr. E. too. It'll be a great, great addition to that school.
So, you also may recall that this is, this is, that we are trying this, and Churchill is the first secondary school to have a technology collaboration space of this, of this type. And so, we'd like to have the opportunity for the staff and the students and the administration of Churchill to utilize this space, to give us feedback. And we have set aside funds in the 2013 bond as part of the technology package to be able to equip the other secondary schools with something similar. But we'd like to wait and get some feedback on how this room is working, if there are any tweaks or changes that they would recommend. And then, you may see very similar things coming forward to you either later this year or next year.
Excellent. Regular agenda? Mr. Johnson, that concludes Building Insight. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That will take us then to item four, our Finance Committee, and our Chair, Mrs. Bonfield.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, our first agenda item is the 1819 First Budget Amendment, and Mrs. Smith is going to walk us through this.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bonfield. For you tonight, we have our standard budget book, and then, we also have a PowerPoint we'll be going along with as well. I've taken the budget book and done screenshots of it and input it into the presentation, so you can see the information in both spots.
Okay, so, we'll refer to the teal packet at the presentation, and obviously, the other packet as the budget book.
So, to start, before we jump in to take a look at the numbers, we'll take a look at our district priority areas, and this is something the board is very familiar with. It's the three focus areas we have for the 2018-19 school year. The first is positive culture, valuing and contributing daily to a positive, engaging, and respectful culture for all. The second is student achievement, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to increase student growth and achievement with a laser-like focus on the needs of our learners. And lastly, financial stability, responsible stewardship of our district's financing, finances and resources, using our financial resources to maximize educational achievement, sustain effective programming, and promote an environment of fiscal responsibility. So, these are the three areas we continue to refer back to when making decisions, so we wanted to bring that forward tonight.
These should look familiar, too. These are very similar to our three strategic focus areas from last year. As we worked with the, our administrative team this summer, and then with you in August, as we reviewed these and continued to hone in on these three priority focus areas, these continue to be the driving force for the majority of our work priorities in the district.
Before we look ahead to 2018-19, I also wanted us to take a look back at 2017-18, and again, these numbers should be familiar. This is what we went in detail over in our October meeting, and it was taking a look at our 2017-18 budget compared to our actual. And as you recall, our revenues came in $1.5 million higher than projected, and on the expenditure side, the expenditures were $1.1 million lower than projected. And although those seem like large dollar amounts, the budget itself had a 99% accuracy rate in both the revenue and the expenditures. So, what are two takeaways from this? Number one, that the 2017-18 ending fund balance becomes the 2018-19 beginning fund balance. So, as a result of our revenues coming in higher than projected and our expenditures coming in lower than projected, our ending fund balance was $2.6 million higher than projected. This means that the 2018-19 beginning fund balance was $2.6 million higher than what was projected in the 2018-19 proposed budget. And as you all know, we're required by state law to put our proposed budget together before the beginning of the fiscal year, so by June 30th, we have to have that adopted. So, at that point, we don't yet know how we'll finish the year. So, so, holding all else constant, if we didn't make any changes to our projections in 1819 to the revenue or the expenditures, you would anticipate that our ending fund balance in 2018-19 would be $2.6 million higher. Another takeaway from looking back at our 1718 school year compared to the budget is, will the prior year budget variances have an impact on the 1819 budget? It could be just a one-time anomaly, or it could be something that the district can count on and then include in our budget for 1819. So, with that, we'll take a look at our general fund first amended budget. You'll notice here the two cells highlighted, that's our beginning fund balance. So, as we stated on the last slide, because we ended the 1718 school year off, well, in our proposed budget, we had projected starting the year with $19.9 million fund balance, and we actually started the year off with a $22.5 million fund balance. Another adjustment on this that I'd like to point out is other financing sources. As we saw on the previous slide, our other financing sources were higher than budgeted last year, and that is something that we do anticipate will continue for the 1819 school year. The next slide, and again, I apologize, that's really small numbers. You'll also see this in the budget book. This is a look at our general fund expenditures, and if you look down at the bottom at the total expenditures, you can see that they're relatively similar in total to what was in the projected budget, but we have a number of changes within the different functions. One of the main drivers of that was the memo we received from the Michigan Department of Education, and they said, beginning with the 2018-19 school year, we're required to charge all of our instructional staff by building. So, we took that as an opportunity, as a cabinet team, to go through all of our instructional staff and not only make sure that they are being charged to the right location, but also the right function. And so, one group that stood out was our elementary support teachers. They were being charged to a pupil support function, but in looking at their job description, much of their job description also entails instructional work. And so, putting them under the basic instruction, or basic programs under the instruction more aligned with what the duties were that they were actually doing. So, I don't want to alarm anybody. If you look at the budget book, you can see a decrease in the pupil support, and we haven't made a significant, we haven't made a cut to our pupil support. That's moving the expenditures up into a different function.
So, I just want to take a minute, make sure everyone's clear on that. So, as we're taking a look at, under Supporting Services, it's the second large section, under Pupil Support. When you look at the proposed budget in the first amended, it may look as though we've made, you know, over $1 million cut to pupil support. We have not. But again, because of the direction from the state, those are, those may be assigned to other codes under other instruction or supporting services. So, those staff positions are still there, but are accounted for in a different area. So, just wanted to make that clear as you take a look at the budget book or the presentation book.
Okay, that doesn't change the overall numbers. It just changes where the allocation goes.
That's correct. One change that you will notice, because you may notice that the basic instruction didn't go up by a million dollars. So, the reason for that is the basic instruction, when we took a look at the amendment, was more in line with what our 1718 actual expenditures were, a little, a little bit over that. But that's the reason why you don't see a $1, you know, a million dollar increase in our basic programs. The other item I'd like to point out is the transportation function. We are recommending allocating some additional budget there from $8.3 million to $8.8 million. And that's because of some grant opportunities that have become available. We know of three right now that offer some incentives for updating our older fleets that aren't as fuel-efficient and aren't good for the air and everything. But with those grants, their offer is a cost-sharing grant, so they'll cover 25% of the grant, and then we have to pick up the rest of it. And it seemed like a good opportunity for us, so we wanted to be able to have those discussions with the board. So, we're recommending putting some money here, and of course, before we do spend any money, we would come back to the board and have some in-depth discussion on, if that's the way we'd like to proceed. But this is something we, something that we started back in the spring discussing, again, a cycle of replacing these fleets and not waiting till they're no longer running. But, you know, we still have a number of fleets. Thankfully, we were able to update a number of them through the 2013 bond, but we still had about a third of our fleet that was still over 10 years old. And when you think about a 10-year-old, you know, vehicle, sometimes, if you're looking at your personal vehicle, that might not seem bad, but when you think about the wear and tear that our buses take, you know, the constant stopping and starting and the cold temperatures, it's all city driving, you know, you're not getting those freeway miles on there. So, this was something that our, you know, Transportation Department asked us to take a look, and we would be supportive of taking a look at that with the board.
So, what you're saying is, in order to get the grant, we have to spend our money first?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, we would apply for the grant, and if we were awarded the grant, they would pay for 25% of the cost of the vehicles up to a certain dollar amount. So, there are a few different grant opportunities available right now. As you know, we had put aside some dollars to plan on doing that, to continue the rotation. We shared with you the extensive listing of our fleet and where our buses are with regard to age and condition. And so, as we continue to look at that process, if we have the ability to have the state pick up the cost of a quarter of those vehicles, we'd certainly like to be able to take advantage of that.
Okay, and you said 25% up to a certain amount?
Each grant is a little bit different.
Okay, so, it could actually be less than that, depending on how much we spend?
It actually, depending on...
In terms of percentage?
I think, too, who applies and how they allocate the funds out, so it could be up to 25%, but it might end up being like a fixed dollar amount. And the grants are very specific, it's only for certain age of fleet. So, most of our, I want to say, now, I don't remember the exact year, if it was prior to 2006, I believe, but maybe it was between 2004 and 2006. So, we do have a few, maybe half a dozen buses that would qualify for that.
Allison, I just wanted to go back, just one second.
Sure.
Basic programs is the same as basic instruction?
Yes.
Is that right? When you were looking at that line item, basic instruction is the same thing?
Yep. That was me mixing instructions, the header, and the title, basic programs. But, yep.
That's fine. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was at the right line. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith, Business Services, I see, is going down by $300,000 from our proposed originally. Can you tell us what was going on with that?
Yes, we did have a few things there. One of them, and now, of course, I'm blanking on the number, or what the clause was. Let me make a note of that, and I will put that in our, on our update for the board.
And then, operate, then the very next line, Operations and Maintenance is going up by some. Can you tell us what's going on with that?
You know, and I didn't bring the detail for that, so I can include that as well.
Sorry. Allison, tell me again, I know we earmarked some buses from last year to purchase that were supposed to be in, maybe you covered this, I'm sorry.
No.
If I missed it, last year, that we were going to purchase this year, has that already come out? I forget if that's already come out, if we've already approved those.
So, that you'll see on the transportation line, so it's still in the budget, and that was because we approved it, but then the buses came in during the 1819 fiscal year. And so, those buses have been paid for, we have received them, but they were paid for in the 1819 school year, so that's included in this budget. The one thing I wanted to go over... The one thing I wanted to go over too, is looking down at the bottom, when we look at what our projected ending fund balance is for 2018-19, we're going from a proposed ending fund balance of 18.8 to 24.2, which is a large change. And I want to break that down. Part of it is what we already discussed with our 2017-18 school year, ending better than expected. 2.6 million dollars worth of this change in ending fund balance as a result of the 17-18 school year ending on a positive note. The other adjustment is because our revenues, that we bumped up our revenues on the previous slide, we took a look at that, and our revenues are up 2.6 million dollars from where we thought we would be when we adopted the budget in June. So when we look at this 5.4 million dollar increase, 2.6 million dollars is coming from increased revenue projections, 2.6 is coming from our better beginning fund balance, and the last 100,000 is coming from this change in our total expenditures. Our expenditures are projected to go, be 100,000 dollars less than what we thought in the proposed budget. So that's what equates, or accounts for the change.
Mrs. Smith, can you remind me again the amount that we bring in with the Wayne County Enhancement Milletage? Is it 4 million or is it 5 million?
Just under 5 million.
Okay. And we have about four more years of that, is that correct?
It goes through 2021, '22.
2022. Okay, so if we had not had that, we would be 5 million dollars short.
And actually, because we've received it now for a few years, that would have a significant impact on our ending fund balance. And we will address that in a future slide.
Okay, we'll begin with that. I'll hold my questions then. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we also going to talk about the states? What is the state's recommended fund balance that we should be carrying?
Yes, I can address that.
Thank you.
The recommendation comes from the Michigan School Business Officials, and their recommendation is 15% to 20% of your expenditures.
Okay. And then can I ask a further question? If there was some issue or problem that this 15.6 million is in our fund balance, let's, how much, how long would we have to operate off of that? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If we had a problem, it's good to have a healthy fund balance for several reasons, but how many weeks does that give us of operating?
And honestly, if I was a better, if I could do it in my head, but it would be...
Approximately.
If we take, it definitely, I remember, because the auditors went over this with us, and it was less than, I want to say, two months. But we could figure that out by taking the 24 million and divide that by 155 million, and that would tell us approximately what percentage, and then we could apply into time. But I'd be happy to formalize that, though, and...
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make the point that we need a healthy fund balance. It's important to have that money saved.
I think the auditors had said it was seven weeks of operating.
Seven weeks, exactly, okay.
Operating funds.
And we will touch upon the fund balance again, too.
All right, thank you.
Later in the presentation. So the question you might be asking yourself is, how did we get here? For most of us, we recall, just a few short years ago, we were looking at a 3.8 million dollar fund balance, which was less than 5%. We were getting letters from the Department of Treasury saying, you're an early warning district in potential fiscal distress, and we had to provide, you know, budget assumptions to them. So we'll take a look at that. One might think, is it because we have an increase in our student enrollment? And the answer to that would be no. Looking back at 2012, our fall pupil count was just under 15,600, and now in 2018, we're at about 14,200 students. Now on the next slide, we'll look at what that year-over-year decline is. If you look at the decline from 2012 through 2018, we've lost about 1,375 students. What you'll notice in the parentheses in blue, that's the loss in foundation allowance, and we took the foundation allowance for that given year, dimes the number of students lost to show the reduction in revenue from the loss in pupils.
Just if someone is watching at home, I'm clarifying note that obviously, we don't measure bodies in decimals. These are full-time equivalent credits.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Centers.
And along with this too, can you remind me how many schools of choice students we have that came in this year?
This year, this year was, I believe, 116? 112?
112.
112.
Okay.
For our, just to be clear, for our 105C limited schools of choice?
Yes.
We also have students that come in to our Nishiiro program, to our ACAP program, to our International Beca Laureate. But I think you're referring to our out-of-district limited school of choice.
Yes.
Yes.
And we've been doing that for about five years now or so?
This is year five.
Okay. So the students that we bring in, ballpark of 50 to 100 per year roughly from the beginning, because it wasn't at 116 the first year, I know.
Right.
We're able to carry those students over then, year after year, and they, once they're in with us, they are our students.
We are. We currently have 399 students from our limited, our 105C limited school of choice program.
Okay, and that's the number I was kind of getting towards, we would be down...
We could round it to 400.
We could. We could throw the extra one in there. I'm grateful to our board, our administration, and our district that has embraced this concept, because being down 400 more students would put us into a significant problem. So it's, I think it's important to do, I think it's important to do on a very limited basis, but it has significantly saved our district.
You know, it really has, and we won't go into a lot of it, because we did do an enrollment review for you at the study session, but it really has helped us to mitigate that enrollment loss. So rather than, you know, being in the neighborhood of 300 to 400, you know, we've been generally in that area for the last couple of years in the 150 to 200, which is still a significant decline, certainly not negating that. But it really has allowed us to stabilize some of our dollars and some of our enrollment, because the board has allowed us to open up to limited school of choice through the 105C, but also for some of our special magnet programs, which have certainly been a big draw. And that really has allowed us to help our enrollment, again, stabilize just a bit. And you'll see that anomaly here. So if you're looking at that 2015-16, you may be wondering what happened that year. And that was the year where we had a few of the larger parochial and private schools in the area close. And we did a lot of outreach to those families and to those students, and garnered, I believe, about 370 students from those closed private and parochial schools that year. And so the net result was a net loss of 55 students. So when you look at that, and it says 2012 to 2013 equals 464, that's actually the net decline. None of those are adding students where we grew in enrollment. But that year, we were able to, again, have a little bit of a unique situation that really allowed us to bring in a number of new families into the district. And so, as you know, we've had, you know, a very focused and directed effort toward attracting and retaining students. And again, we shared some of that in the enrollment piece, but really, in relatively small numbers, but it's made a big impact to have some of those additional students coming in to allow, again, our budget to stabilize and also our enrollment to really not decline at such a rapid pace. Yes.
Mrs. Oakley, if you don't mind, I'm going to follow this tangent for a moment. We went into great depth in our study session just last week about this, but for those who may not, who were not in attendance at that meeting, the board had asked also for how well those students are assimilating into Livonia Public Schools. Could you just, for the benefit of the public, give a quick synopsis of discipline problems, attendance problems, et cetera? I mean, how we're standing right now?
Okay.
I remember if I'm not going to put...
I'm going to do my best without our information directly in front of us, but some of the...
Just on the whole.
Right. Some of the pieces that we took a look at were GPA for our current secondary students, attendance for students K-12, and then incidences of behavior. And we saw a slightly higher, really almost, really almost on target, but slightly higher GPA for our students that were from out-of-district. And we actually saw a better average attendance with regard to those students as well on a K-12 look. And then again, very, very similar with regard to behavior incidences. Then we also took a look at factors such as students that were identified through 31A as at-risk learners, and students receiving assistance through Title I, REAL, or Free and Reduced. And we'd be happy to share that data out at a committee meeting to be able to show those numbers, but they were all within a very, very tight band across the board, and in some cases, maybe just a tick up or a tick below, but really looked very, very similar to our overall population.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Smith, just looking at the screen, it says year-over-year decline. The blue numbers are the loss of foundation allowance as a result of the loss of those students?
That's correct.
So I'm not a savant, so I can't add those numbers in my head, but it looks like it's somewhere from 2012 to 2018, we lost 10 to 11 million dollars in foundation allowance because of the loss of students.
And honestly, it's kind of compounding, too, if you think about it, because the students, the 464, were not only lost that year, they were also lost the next year, and then the next, you know. So even adding that would be underestimating the amount of revenue that the district is out because of declining enrollment.
And then you have to remember, we can't just take a, we can't necessarily just assume that all of those students would have been there each of those years. Some of those students may have graduated, some of those students may actually have returned. And so it's a bit difficult to take a look at that in total or compounded, but certainly, you're correct, that as we look at that, when we lose a student, we lose that. Just similarly, when we bring in students from out-of-district, and we brought them in, we have initially brought in 499 students through our 105C out-of-district school of choice. We retained 399 of those students. And so again, we also get to then compound that revenue as those students stay with us. Now again, not all of them do, because certainly, providing your own transportation and making those decisions on an annual basis, our decisions our families have to make, but we're able to also get the benefit of those students staying with us for a number of years.
Alison, and you can stop me if this is going to come up in another slide. I want to go back to the five-year slide. I remember some of those years and probably a few more of those years than we'd like to remember. I think the budgets that you presented to us wound up being, we like squeaked in with like a $200,000 estimated fund balance for the budget, correct? And so what happened was because we wound up with a better fund balance, we were able to create the budgets, keep those programs intact, and at the end of the year, thankfully, we did not have a $200,000 fund balance. You know, we had a 2 or 3 million dollar fund balance at the end of the year. Part of that being one-time revenues that we got from selling different land. Of course, I think we always do better during the year, because we budget for some things that are going to happen. Say we, I know we've lost personnel during the year, and rather than replace them, we've left that slot open until the beginning of the next year, which has also created some cost savings for us in order to get to that 3.8 million dollars from the projected 200,000 dollars that we had. And so my point with bringing that forward is that if we had, really had, at the end of the year, a $200,000 fund balance, because the state requires us to present a balanced budget, even though we might think we might get to a 3 million dollar fund balance at the end of the year, we would have had to have cut all those programs between that 3 million and that 200,000 dollars, correct? In order to have a balanced budget, irregardless of what we wound up with at the end of the year. Is that, am I correct?
That is, yes. Legally, we're not allowed to expend any more than what's been appropriated by the board. So when we come in the fall and take a look back at our previous school year, I'm hoping you'll always see a balance, you know, of money that we didn't spend. And if you, if we ever aren't in that position, then I'm in trouble. So there always is going to be a balance again, because we don't know what emergencies might come up, or if a staff member might be going out that we need to get in a, you know, a long-term sub for. We start working on that final budget amendment, kind of end of April, beginning of May, so that we have time to cover it in our study session before it comes in June. So we still have a number of months left in the school year when we're putting that final amendment together. But to your point, yes, we have to get authorization from the board for anything we expend before that's done. So that's why when we're putting that budget together, we'll always be a little conservative and give ourselves a little bit of cushion.
Right. So part of the reason we're keeping some of this fund balance is so that we don't have to cut programs for the budget. And then maybe try and add them back during the year. If we find the money, we can maintain those programs. And if we do better than expected, then our fund balance, thankfully, will go up a little bit. My second, well, I guess my second. So I'm looking at this chart, and I see, you know, that we have really a nice upward trend here. I know that, you know, we have enough money in here, which is nice, so that we don't have to cut programs during the budgeting process to make that work. I also think that it's also helped with our teacher layoffs when we have a, yes, is that correct? That we don't have to...
That's true. That's one of the benefits of the fund balance, and we will get to that, too.
Yeah, we're going to go into a little bit more detail as to, Mrs. Smith will go into a little bit more detail about, just in general, what that looks like, because, you know, this is certainly, you know, a positive development for our district, there's no doubt.
So if we're going to cover that in the later slide, I still have a couple of things from just looking at this chart. So another thing that you mentioned was that we have emergencies, and we just talked about like the roof repairs and stuff like that. We're running out of, we're not running out of bond money. Careful what I say. We are coming to the end of our bond. We have a lot of roofs and a lot of parking lots and a lot of vehicles that have been neglected over the past years as we have tried to save programs, which has really led to some pretty awful conditions for our employees and their buildings and their cars. I know we talked about some of the vans where the floorboards were gone, and people, you know, salt was coming up through the, onto their feet through the floorboards, and obviously, we're re-roofing a building with admittedly failed portions of the building of the, I'm sorry, of the roof. And so we're able to take care of that. So not only do we need to educate our kids, but we also need to make sure that we take care of these buildings that we've been entrusted with. So as our fund balance has grown, I know a lot of that goes to what Mrs. Burton talked about was the Wayne County Enhancement Milletage. And I understand that that's for a set period of time. We only have a few years for that. And it looks like, you know, we're in the 18-19 school year, we have the 19-20 school year, and then you said it expires in the 2021 school year, correct?
No, 21, 22.
22. So we have a couple more years of that. So after this current school year, we have another three years. So I think one of my concerns is, you know, I'm watching this uptick on our fund balance, and I know that we've, we're hiring some people, we're putting some more programs in place, and I think, are we not creating some legacy costs with that, where the Wayne County Enhancement Milletage is allowing us to increase our programming right now? It's, we're doing a really great job, but these are not all one-time expenses. So as we are going through and utilizing these dollars, we are creating legacy costs. Is that correct?
That is correct. Whenever you're, you know, hiring new staff, you know, especially if you're not just planning to keep them for the year, that does create ongoing costs.
Okay. So now, we're creating all these legacy costs, which are going to remain on either upward or flat level, depending on where we're at. Yet, when we get to the 22-23 school year, which seems like it's kind of far in the distance, we are going to have a sudden decline of 5 million dollars in our fund balance, correct? Not in our fund balance, in funding. Not in our fund balance, in funding.
So we're going to go into more detail on some of this information. So I think there's some different assumptions made there, and just to be, I want the board to be assured that we've planned responsibly for this. And so, we looked at the chunk of the, of the initial dollars in three-year cycles. As you may recall, many of the things that we took a look at and have added, we talked about reevaluating after three years, and then reevaluating again after three years. And so while certainly some of those things are plans that we intended, we intend to keep in place, we also have a mechanism to continue to monitor those so that, one, we have an opportunity that has yet to be determined whether or not the districts will determine to put this measure back on the ballot and have the opportunity to have this renewed, which may, may happen. And that will come forward prior to that time, so we will know whether or not those dollars will continue. We also had the change in the legislature last year, as you know, that may alter the total amount as they added the charter schools and the PSAs. But with that knowledge, we've really tried to plan responsibly. You'll see a slide that Mrs. Smith will share that will show certainly a growth in our expenditures, there's no doubt about it. As you know, we've, we've certainly made some, some significant adds. We've not spent every last dime of that. And so part of our plan was to have some of those dollars extend and be able to continue to be utilized on through the years, so that we didn't simply plan on using every dollar within that six-year period of time. And so we had five very specific focus areas and goals for our, for the Wayne County Enhancement Milage dollars. We've worked really closely in our budgeting process to make sure that we're meeting the tenants of those, of those goals. But we also have planned responsibly that we've not utilized every single dime of that each year of those six years, so that there won't be that, that precarious point at the end of that. And then also, we, we, it's really an unknown whether or not those dollars will be recurring. And so we know that's certainly a potential opportunity for us, and we also have some different contingencies in place should that happen for us to reevaluate at that time.
Okay. So I, I think that, to my point, yes, is that it's a fine line right now, is that we can't, I guess where I was going was, we can't, we can't bank on this being the, the climate that we are in continually. We, we're in a very tumultuous, un, I can't even, I'm sorry, it was my words, I'm still not feeling very good. There's no guarantee in the future that, that this is going to be the, the future of public education. We just changed our governor, the laws keep changing, so I guess, I just want to make sure that we're not creating costs today that we know are projected that aren't going to be able to be covered in the future, because we can't bank on the Wayne County Enhancement Milage. We don't know what the gov, next governor's going to do with school funding and, and things like that, I think was the, the point that I was getting to. It's not that we were going to run out of money, but that we make sure that we work to be able to, for the longevity of the district.
Sure, absolutely.
Speaking of state funding, that leads me to our next slide. We addressed that it is in our increasing enrollment that's helping us with our fund balance. And next, to take a look at our foundation allowance. So while we're happy to receive increases from our legislators, when we look at what the percentage of increases are over the last few years, going back to 14, 15, we saw a .6 increase, the next year a .9 increase, a .7 increase, a .7, and this year we saw a 1.4% increase, so.
I know you're starting to get a phone again. It's gone now. Can you, along with those increases, can you give us maybe an idea of our costs increased annual, just as a comparison?
I'd be happy to. In fact, we'll, on another slide, we will see the expenditure trend over these years, so we can follow up on that. But we definitely seen, you know, one prime example would be our retirement cost, the increase of retirement over the last few years. So, so, yeah. In the next slide, we'll take a look at how our foundation allowance increase in 2018, 19 helped offset the decrease from our student enrollment decline. So this fall, we had students, 14,209 FTE, FTE student count. And when we multiply that by the foundation allowance increase of $120 that we received, that generated an additional $1.7 million for the district. But unfortunately, with our 181 pupil decrease, times the foundation allowance of 82, 89, that's what our foundation allowance was last year, that generated a $1.5 million decrease in revenue. So the net increase for Lovonia Public Schools in foundation allowance was 200,000. And while, again, we're grateful, if we didn't see that increase, that would have just been a flat decrease for us, so we're very happy to have the additional revenue to help offset the declining enrollment, it's not a, a big windfall for us.
Alison-
That's a sad slide.
When this happens, are we able to cut the 1.5 million dollars from our budget? So, you know, we, we have a net of $200,000, we get the extra 1.7. Are we able to cut 1.5 million dollars from our budget in order to offset that cost? Or that, that-
No, no. Unfortunately, the pupils all don't leave from one or two or three or four classrooms that they're scattered across the district. So while we do take a look at our staffing, and we definitely try to be as conservative when we're doing our staffing as possible and what we're projecting, we aren't necessarily able to cut 1.5 million dollars worth of expenditures. And typically, wouldn't necessarily maybe see that in a proposed budget, maybe a little bit, but unfortunately, no. But eventually, you know, it is our goal to, you know, right-size our expenditures to be in line with our student-
So it's not a one, it's not a one-for-one offset?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith, when you plan the budget, though, you do project what our enrollment is likely to be. So if you project a decline, then you adjust your numbers accordingly. And my understanding is this isn't too far off from the projected number?
We were very happy. We were projecting 175 pupil, not happy to leave, lose 175 kids, but that we projected to be down 175 students and we're down 181, so.
So this wasn't a shock to the system, so to speak? As you know, we brought to you in the proposed budget, again, that we would be down approximately 175 pupils. We shared with you at our study session that we used 12 or 13 different metrics to project that enrollment, and we were within six students for this, this full student count. So we had already, we had already included that in our budget. So this is not an unexpected decrease in our expenditures.
Mrs. Smith, sorry. Just as we're going through this, I really think that it's important, because I think people will look at, some people will look at the slide and say, if you have that many less students, you should be able to cut that easily out of your budget. And I think you alluded to it, just talking about, in a district our size, when we have so many buildings and so many grades, every school has that many grades, but we can't just close a building because we lost 181 students. And so I think some of that piece is deceiving, because we can't, just like you said, they don't come from all, all the same class, so we can't just cut that teacher or do things that are easy to make that, to make up for that, that loss. So I think that to look at it and say, well, if you're educating 101, 181 less students, you should not need those funds. The buildings are still the same, we still need the same buildings. We have, in the past, closed buildings because we are, of our student decline. So I think that we are, just like you said, taking steps to right-size our district. But when those, when it's 181 spread across the district, it's not something that is easy to, to fix immediately. So I think that that's one of the things, that when we talk about still needing the same amount of money, it's because our fixed costs are much the same. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if the student enrollment and our foundation allowance aren't what's helping our fund balance, then what is helping our fund balance? So looking back again at that chart of our fund balance growth over the last few years, we do have included in there the sale of property. We, during this time period, also started receiving the Wayne County Enhancement Milage. And as I think we alluded to, the year that we started receiving it, the levy started in the winter, and we intentionally did not start spending that money until the next fiscal year. We were very responsible, took a lot of time to look at what supports we did want to put into place, so that did help us grow our fund balance. And then again, we started using that money, those monies in the next year.
And that's part of what will allow us to extend a bit beyond that. So because we had that semester where we did our planning and didn't start until the next fiscal year, that allows those dollars to extend a bit beyond, and that was very purposeful in our planning.
During this time period, we also started receiving the RESA Special Ed Transportation reimbursement. The first year, that was $850,000. That was a nice surprise that we didn't know about when we were putting the proposed budget together, and then during the course of the year, we found out about that. And that's something that we've continued to see for the last couple of years. So starting with the 18, 19 school year, this was the first year that we went ahead and included that payment in our proposed budget, because we felt like we've now seen a trend. We've also taken a look at the special ed budget from Wayne RESA, and it appears they still have a very healthy fund balance, and I believe it is their wish to help the districts. What this reimbursement does, we submit all of our special education transportation costs to the state, where we are then reimbursed 70% of it through our state aid. And this portion from RESA was meant to help us with that remaining 30% that remained unfunded from the state that our general fund was picking up the cost for. During this period, we've also-
Mrs. Smith, we still have a great deal of expenditures on special ed that are not reimbursed from either the state or RESA, correct? That is a responsibility of the district.
When you take a look at our, separate from the transportation, we submit two reports to the state, a transportation report, and then a special ed expenditure report without the transportation.
Right, instructional costs.
And that, our average cost is about 30 million between the center fund and our general fund, and the state reimburses us about 30% of the cost. And then the remainder is coming out of, if it's a center program, RESA will pick up the rest of that cost. But if it's our general fund, it's our general fund that's picking that up. So in general, of the 30 million dollars, about half of that is related to the center program, our Act 18 program, and the other half is out of the general fund. So if you think about 15 million dollars with the special ed costs in our general fund, about 30% of that is funded through state aid, and then the remainder is just out of our general fund.
Okay, thank you.
One little point, too, it's not 30% on top of our foundation allowance. They figure out, because they know our membership, that if you had, you know, say it was, I'll call it 700 special ed students, that we were given $8,409 per special ed student. So what they do is take a, your total cost incurred of the students, take 30%, and then they also back out the foundation allowance that they've already given you for that student. So looking at these, I did skip over one, the, also the changes in expenditures. I know we touched upon that, too. We've had some closures of our buildings. You know, we've also looked at cost containment measures. So we've seen a decline in expenditures, but then we have also seen an increase in expenditures related to the Wayne County Enhancement Milage.
Alison, did we move the athletic fund into the general fund as well?
18, 19 is the first year, so that, that would not actually have an impact on-
On, on these numbers?
Yeah. So looking at each one of those, you know, are these factors that are helping our district achieve financial stability through our fund balance recurring in nature or one-time occurrences? So we'll go through these. Sale of property is a one-time boost to our revenue, and although, you know, we're, you can sell another property, eventually you do run out of property, so that is a one-time increase to our revenues. The RESA Special Ed Transportation reimbursement, I said reoccurring question mark, because again-
We hope.
Yeah. We're now beginning to predict that this will become a recurring thing, but this, too, is out of our control and will be RESA's board that will determine if we continue to receive that payment. The increased transfers from other funds, and we'll get into some of the other funds in later slides, but taking a look at, for instance, our special ed fund and looking at what that fund balance is, and what a target fund balance in there should be, and then moving over excess, we've included that. Should we zero out, you know, a fund balance in another fund, that would be a one-time transfer over to our general fund. So that would again be a one-time boost. And then the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, and we touched upon that, that's a term-limited tax levy right now. We're hopeful that it would be supported and, you know, maybe come back to us, but that's, that's definitely up in the air right now. One other thing that is helping our general fund right now is the 2013 bond, so a big thank you to our community for voting for that and supporting that. That's allowed us to alleviate some of the pressure on the general fund. It's, we've been able to make technology purchases, think of all the Chromebooks that we've been able to order that, had we not had the bond, would have been most likely coming out of our general fund, you know, furniture, security upgrades. So we've had a number of things we've able to, we've been able to take out of our bond funds that, that have helped our general fund.
Alison, you mentioned the technology came out of the 2013 bond, and I know we've talked about our replacement cycles. So now, we have all this really great technology, but we know that it keeps cycling through faster and faster without the bond there to support those technology purchases. Those replacement cycles then are going to have to come out of the general fund in the future, correct?
That is true. We're also taking a look, and we'll cover that tonight. We do have a technology fund that is a remnant from a previous bond, and so that's earmarked for technology. And in fact, in our first budget amendment, we've proposed an increase so that our next round of technology purchases would be coming out of there, the next round of Chrome carts. And what was the other thing? Oh, we've also talked about sinking fund in our sinking fund planning. That's been part of our discussion on, if we go out for a straight renewal, or if we're going to go out for a new levy, and if we go out for a new levy, that now the legislators have deemed that technology would be, be able to be purchased out of our sinking fund. And one caveat there is, you know, our facility needs are being assisted by the sinking fund, so unless we increase then what we're requesting from the voters, you know, the, the question does come in about how much money in the sinking fund we'd be able to earmark for technology. So that's something that we'll continue to discuss.
Yeah, that's actually our, a January discussion for the board, and then we'll, then we'll be bringing that to a committee of the whole meeting as well, and asking you to make that determination, because as you know, our sinking fund milage will be, we will be going out to the voters next summer. And so we will ask you to make that determination of whether or not we would add technology as part of that request, and then what, what we would be requesting as a levy. So we'll get into more detail on, on that, but certainly we'd have to look at, at what our funding source would be for the technology replacement.
And Alison, our, our needs of items that can be paid for out of the sinking fund are, are greater than the money we get in for the sinking fund, is that correct?
That is. We just enlisted the help of Plant Moran Cressa to go through and update our facility assessment. We last did a formal facility assessment back in 2015, and so that's been updated. And while you may think, hey, we just got finished with the 2013 bond, aren't those, you know, things going down that it, you know, it is a continual cycle of replacement and upgrading and updating, so that our needs definitely do continue to be out there, and, you know, we do need to continue to look at what funding sources we have available to meet those facility needs.
So even though it'll be nice to be able to make technology purchases, if, if we do the sinking fund and if we change the wording to include technology, it's, it may be just a push with our building costs that we are, it's only going to increase the pressure on the sinking fund rather than be able to replace some items, correct? Because we're already pushing the sinking fund to the limit, we have way more needs than the sinking fund will allow. And then if we add technology onto the top of that, although it would be a nice option to be able to take those large chunks of money out of the sinking fund, it certainly is not going to alleviate any of the pressure on our funds, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
On the next slide, we'll go into some detail on the fund balance, and I've already touched upon a few of these items earlier. But first off, just a definition of what a fund balance is, because we do refer to that often. A fund balance is a difference between the money that comes into the district through state aid, federal money, grants, et cetera, and the money that is spent. So salaries, textbooks, maintenance costs, utility bills, et cetera. The fund balance is not equivalent to a person's savings account, it's not all cash that can be used for any purpose. For instance, this past year, we did have some of our fund balance earmarked. And also, by accounting rules, we're required- And also by accounting rules, we're required to put receivables, record our receivables in the year. So as you may recall, our state aid payments come to us over eleven months, including July and August for the previous year. So included in our fund balance are the July and August state aid payments that the state makes for us related to the previous year. So three reasons for having a fund balance. It helps protect a district from borrowing for cash flows. Because there are two months each year during which schools do not receive funds from the state, yet payrolls must be met, bills must be paid. No, I think that's a typo. I'm sorry, I said two months each year. There's a delay. It's September is the month that we don't receive the state aid payment. School districts don't receive their first state aid revenue check for the new school year until mid-October, and about four payrolls have been covered by that time period. Fund balance also provides a way to set money aside for larger purchases like textbooks and repairs and maintenance not covered by the sinking fund. And lastly, uncertainty about state and federal funding. Much of our revenue sources are out of the district's control. A fund balance allows us to manage revenue losses while protecting programs for our students. Something we've touched upon as well earlier.
Mrs. Smith, also, for benefit of those who may not have been following a few years ago, when we talk about cash flow, we were in a position like most of the districts in the state of Michigan where we were having to borrow in order to make payroll for the first few months of the year until we hit that mid-October payment. So that cash flow situation equated to, if I'm remembering, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year it cost us. And that was just because it worked out better for the state to pay us in October, even though they recognized that we've got to begin paying our folks well before, middle of October. We don't expect our teachers to wait for two months to get paid.
And the problem with that, Mrs. Burton, was that not only did we have to borrow the money to cover that short period of time where we had the payroll, the state would only let us borrow the money for twelve months, correct? So even though we were, we got the money in October, we were still paying twelve months' worth of interest that was eating away at our general fund because we were not allowed to pay that back and stop the interest bleed, correct?
Or only take the payment out when we needed it, if we needed it. It was if you asked for X amount of dollars, you were getting X amount of dollars. This was the interest associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
We alluded to this as well. On the next slide, taking a look at our change in expenditures. You know, over the last few years, we have had the reduction in expenditures. And then with the passage of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, we have seen an uptick in our expenditures. And this would be in line with what the intent of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage was. You know, we had a few goals with that money. One of them was, you know, bringing greater financial stability to the district, but that wasn't the only goal. So I think seeing an increase in the expenditures definitely is in support of what the goal of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage is and what we shared with our public that we would do with those funds.
And Mrs. Smith, I'm going to go back. Those, the increases that we're seeing are not necessarily one-time increases, correct? I mean, as we see the uptick in costs, those costs are going to continue at one fifty-five or higher unless we do some cost cutting, correct?
That's correct. A number of the increases are staff-related. We also have had some, you know, I'll call it a one-time thing, but it's not. Like thinking of textbooks, we've had, we've been able to order some textbooks. That may not be a large order that we see every year. But again, we are going to have to get on a cycle of textbook placement. So but by and large, a lot of the increase we saw here was added staff support.
But so when we say, when you, textbooks, sorry, is one of my pet peeves.
Yeah.
When you say, you know, textbooks are one-time, maybe like a one-time purchase, maybe we buy history textbooks as a one-time purchase. The problem is, is that we have a multitude of textbooks. So really, the textbook budget should be similar from year to year as we move through the different grade levels, the different subjects, and take the time to keep our books up to date. That now that we're increasing our textbook expenses, isn't... We're not just going to wind up replacing all those textbooks because we hadn't for a lot of years. And then we're not going to see those costs anymore, correct?
That's correct.
We actually were, didn't replace textbooks for many years that should have been replaced. We're in a position now where we can start replacing those textbooks. Our hope is that we can keep them on a replacement schedule. So hopefully, our textbook budget is going to be from minimal to a reasonable amount to keep our textbook cycle going.
Exactly, something that can be sustained. It's because, you know, the funding, as we saw just a few years ago under that five percent and years before that, that you did have to put off purchases. And so some of those purchases were put off. Now we're getting caught up. But that, once we get caught up, it's not a one-and-done time. Then it will be a matter of getting us on a renewal cycle.
And can you talk to us maybe a little bit about online textbooks? We know that, you know, we have, for us old people, went to school with the, you know, carried our backpacks with books. We have hard copy textbooks, and then we have the online textbooks. And so, and I think there's a relationship with technology there, too, is that the cost between a textbook and an online textbook, what the difference is between that. And then if we are doing online textbooks, that there is a certain cost associated with making sure that we keep up the technology in order to be able to utilize the information for the textbooks.
That's, so taking a look at our textbooks, when we do look at the online version versus a hard copy, we don't see a significant change in price between the two versions. So it isn't saving us money to buy the online. So it's really going back to those committees and, you know, relying on our curriculum department to tell us, you know, what would be the best option for our students. But to your point, with the gaining of popularity of online textbooks also becomes that responsibility of the district to keep up on our technology, that the Chromebooks that we purchased, for instance, aren't going to last us ten years. They weren't meant to, you know, so that we need to be responsible in our planning for that so that we can keep up with what we've started.
You know, and I think one of the things that we should be really proud of as we take a look at this graph in particular is that some of the goals that we shared with the community when we went, when we supported the Wayne County Enhancement Millage were to attract and retain high-quality staff, to be able to maintain, or where possible, improve class size, to provide additional support to our struggling learners, to update our instructional materials and resources, and to provide some additional financial stability. And what we will continue to bring forward to you and to the community are the measures that we've done specifically in those areas. I'll give you one example. As you took a look at declining enrollment, we actually had an increase, I think by one or two FTEs of staffing, even though we were down one hundred and eighty-one students. We maintained our staffing and even increased it just a bit, which then made a positive impact either on the number of class offerings we could provide to our students or better our class size, eliminate combination classes. So there are some very specific and tangible measures that have been taken. As you take a look at the expenditures from two thousand sixteen seventeen to eighteen nineteen, you see an almost thirteen million dollar uptick in expenditures. And we are absolutely thrilled to be able to provide that additional support to our students, to our staff, to our schools. We would like to do even more, obviously, in each of those areas. And so I think the district has a lot to be proud of as you take a look at that. And while doing that, still able to continue to grow our fund balance. And so I think we've made some decisions in these past few years that really have kept the promises and hold us accountable to those initial goals. We also want to be able to see those dollars continue on as long as we can. And so it's constantly a balance of trying to, just what you asked about earlier, of what can we maintain? And so how fast do you grow and how much do you add? And what commitments do you make? And so I think we've made some really good steps. We look forward to continuing to make steps in each of those five areas in a positive way for, again, for our students, for our staff, and for our schools. And I think this is something that, as the board takes a look at this information this evening, should feel really good about Livonia Public Schools.
I wanted to piggyback off of what Mrs. Oak was just saying. You said it so eloquently. But I really do think that this, although it looks like we are spending more money when we're getting less in, not less, but not as much, it really goes back to our district priority areas. And I think you can see it in our buildings. I think that when you go to our buildings, you can see that we've invested this money. I was just there the other day, and a little kindergartner was wandering in the parking lot. The parent must have not realized he didn't go in or whatever, just sobbing in the parking, or kind of right outside the door. And EST was right there to take control of the situation. Those increased personnel that we put in the buildings make a difference. The parents that are in the kindergarten classroom, in there often, and they make a difference. So I know that this looks like we're just spending money, but the reality is that it makes a difference in the building level. You can tell in the classrooms and you can tell in the buildings when you have additional support there. So I want to commend you and your team for putting these in and putting them in wise areas so that they make a difference. They're making an impact on the building and on the students. So I think when we go back to what we're all about and why we sit at this table, it's because we want student achievement to increase. And I think that that's why this whole discussion is so important, is because we want to provide the best that we can for our community and for our students. And so it makes me proud to see that money that increased because it does make a difference when you're in the buildings. You can tell that it is making a difference. And my kids have been the benefactors of recipients, I should say, of some of the new textbooks. And so it does make a difference to each student, so thank you.
Just to piggybacking on what you just said, this is a response to pent-up need.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
This is not spending beyond on things that we feel are luxuries or things that are nice add-ons, but in fact restoring some related services.
I think restoring is the best term. Is being a parent who had children on the other end of the recession.
Yeah.
I know Mrs. Frank talks about, and I will always be an advocate of the support staff in our buildings. We used to have so much support staff. And I think with public education, our children are facing so much outside of school that we need to be able to provide as much assistance to them as we can in the buildings in order to make it so that those kids are ready to sit in their seats and learn and be prepared for that teacher, the teacher's vast knowledge and ability to teach. But if we can't get our kids to a place where they're able to learn from that, you know, because there's so many demands on these kids, so many outside factors that one teacher cannot overcome all, every single student. But if we can have the, you know, the early, the ESAPs, when my kids were little, it was the ESAPs and the ESTs. And we used to have additional office staff. And so that, you know, the kids needed to go to the office, you know, because they were ill. Or we have, you know, the kids that have medical-ish needs on a daily basis and stuff like that that if we can increase all those support staffs so that the teachers actually have time to teach and to impart that knowledge into our kids rather than having to, you know, being pulled in twenty different directions. I will always be an advocate of adding more support staff to our buildings.
With that, we'll transition from general fund and take a look at some of our other funds. This will follow the order of the budget book. First up is our funded projects fund. The district internally keeps track of our grants in this separate fund. And the state recognizes this. But then they also say when we're going to do our final expenditure report for the year for the entire district, that these should be rolled up with the general fund because the main purpose of these grants are for instructional purposes. So just wanted to make note of that.
So while these, you would factor, you would consider these general fund, sometimes there are specific allocations that can't just be used. You know, if the grant is for textbook services, we can then change it for buses.
That's exactly. Exactly. These are all restricted funds that have been given to the district for a given purpose. And we assign specific accounts for them so that we can make sure that we are using the funds for the purpose they were intended. A later agenda item will actually be going into some more depth on the grants, so kind of skim over it right now. One thing I did want to make note of is some of our grants do allow for indirect cost reimbursement. And there are some administrative costs in running some of these grants. And so some of them do recognize that. And that is then an incoming transfer to the general fund to help some of the costs. So that would be, for instance, payroll time to process people that are being paid out of the grants or HR time. Next up is our special education fund. This is a special revenue fund and is where the district tracks the revenue and expenditures related to our four Act eighteen center programs. Wayne RESA reimburses the district for indirect costs and for the use of our facilities, in other words, for rent. Here, we didn't see a significant, you know, switch from our proposed budget, just some minor changes, still looking at an ending fund balance of about roughly a million dollars.
Again, this is considered general fund revenue, correct?
This is actually a special revenue fund. So it is, the state does recommend that it is kept in a separate fund, so.
Okay.
And that makes sense, too, because these are then reported out to Wayne County and kind of RESA. And so that's how we generate our reimbursement from them. So but speaking of that, to the fund balance, the fund balance in the special education fund was generated over time by not transferring the full reimbursement of indirect costs and rent to the general fund. So we could transfer the fund balance to the general fund, which would increase the fund balance by point six percent this year. But just like the sale of property, that would be a one-time transfer and a one-time source of revenue for the general fund.
And Ms. Smith, remind me, I may be incorrect, but there was a transfer. We did do a transfer in recent years, haven't we?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And what we do, it generates, I'll say roughly, and actually we can look at the slide. I can tell you exactly what indirect costs are. But it does generate, I'll say about one point, if it's maybe one point two, one point five million dollars worth of indirect cost in a year. And so that's what we'll end up transferring to the general fund. If I'm remembering, if I'm not getting my years wrong, though, this, either this past year or the year before that, we ended up moving two point one million dollars over, you know, taking a look at what a reasonable target fund balance would be for that fund. And so we do recommend that we maintain a fund balance in here to pay for emergencies or Act eighteen program enhancements that the county wouldn't pay for. And a prime example of this would be the Garfield Community Schools, that we were able to boost our renovation budget because we were able to move some money over from the special education fund and then earmark that for the capital project, so for the work at Garfield. We also have situations, for instance, for our program work. I'm trying to think what the name of it is, but it's the students at the Work Skills Program that go into the community for jobs. And we have to use buses, you know, to transport those kids. Is the trend with a lot of our buses, they're older buses. And so actually, one of the buses in recent years stopped working. And we asked Wayne RESA if they would purchase a new bus because it was being exclusively used for our Act eighteen program. And their response would be, that's what your indirect costs are for. And so that was one of the perks, again, of having some money earmarked is that in that event, we do have some money that we can pull from to make purchases like that. Some of the program enhancements, sometimes there's things happening, maybe in the district, that we think would be appropriate to spread across the entire district. And maybe we go to Wayne RESA and say, we'd like to get, and I'm just thinking this up, but the projectors for the classrooms, and they might say, that's not really a necessary program expenditure. But we, as a district, feel like that's in the best interest of our students. That would be something that we could pull some of these indirect costs from, or indirect costs to make those purchases.
Just clarify for me, special education fund is just the Act eighteen county program or it also includes our center program, or no?
That is.
The center program is out of our general fund?
And we call it the, this is just the Act eighteen, just the four programs.
Okay.
I personally, I know when I came to the district, I was a little confused because we have local center programs. And then we also have these Act eighteen center programs. And then we also have these Act 18 center programs. This fund is just our four. We have a moderative cognitive impairment program. We have the Work Skills Program for 18 to 26-year-olds. We have the VI program and then also the Autism Spectrum Program.
So an example of a program that we fund is the LTP program with our students over at Schoolcraft. So previously, those students had been part of the Skill Center and covered by Act 18. A few years ago, when the requirements changed, our district still wanted to be able to offer high-quality programming to our students. And so the LTP program that we house over at Schoolcraft is not covered by, for instance, Act 18 costs. So those are costs covered by our general fund.
Moving on to another special revenue fund, we have the Food Service Fund. And this is a special revenue fund is where the district tracks the revenue and expenditures related to our food service program. And these are restricted funds, we wouldn't be able to move any fund balance to another fund. They have to be strictly used for school nutrition program costs. The fund balance is limited to three months' average expenditures. And that's calculated by dividing the total program cost by nine operating months and then multiplying that by three. So that's something the district has been very conscious of. And we're taking a look at some of our needs across the district and planning to utilize some of our fund balance this year to meet some of those needs. A number of our stoves, I've been told, are over 25 years old. Looking at some of our serving lines, so Mr. Francis and I are working with our food service department. And we'll be bringing forth recommendations for the board for some upcoming purchases to support our nutrition program.
And so your, the information you see on the screen is the same information from your budget book? It's the same information in our board book online? It's just, this just has some expanded information in your presentation packet? So if you, they're, they're the same?
Mrs. Smith, so, I'm sorry. You said that we can't transfer any money out of this fund to?
Are you looking at the 200,000?
Yeah.
That is actually our indirect costs, so this is
Oh, okay, I got it.
They do allow you to recognize the administrative costs.
Okay, so it's not really a transfer of other funds, it's really a reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so then, this is a self-sustaining fund, is that correct?
There's a number of districts out there that rely on their general fund to supplement their food service program. And fortunately, we're in a position where the revenues received either through paid lunches or through the federal grants do fully support the costs incurred.
And so part of what you're saying is we're, we're required to spend that money? Because you said, so if we, for some reason, came up with a groovy lunch program and our revenue went crazy, you know, because the kids just loved to eat their lunches, we would be forced to spend that. We couldn't use that to buy textbooks, that would have to be used. And not that the food service doesn't need some, you know, the kitchens and stuff need a lot of help. We could definitely use those funds, but we cannot just start stockpiling money in that. We have to come up with?
A plan to spend it. In fact, if you start nearing the cap for the fund balance, the state will reach out to you and make you submit, you know, a documented plan for spending down those funds.
Okay, and again, like, we don't have those, those costs aren't, or those needs aren't there, but, okay, thank you.
We'll move on to our Health and Welfare Fund. This is an internal service fund where the district tracks revenue and expenditures related to our employee benefits, such as insurance offerings, including health, dental, vision, life disability, workers' compensation, and employee wellness programs. The revenue comes into the fund from employee contributions primarily made through payroll deductions and from transfers from other funds. The transfers from other funds is a result of the district charging the cost of employee benefits to the general fund, the special education fund, Fund of Projects Fund, and the Food Service Fund, and then crediting the Revenue and Health and Welfare Fund.
So just going back, if I recall correctly, right before I joined the board, Livonia Public Schools was still self-funding our insurance, correct?
Mr. Centers, that leads probably to my next slide, but yes, yes.
Okay, I'll let you.
Do you want me to? Prior to January 1st, 2014, some districts Dan joined on the 3rd.
He studied that.
Yeah, March.
Prior to January 1st, 2014, some of our district employee groups were self-insured for both health insurance and workers' compensation. Now the district is self-insured only for workers' compensation. The district does purchase an excess workers' compensation policy that does cover individual claims over 400,000. So we do have a cap, that's something that we thought would be important to have in place.
So within one year, then for one person, the cost can't exceed 400,000 dollars. We have an umbrella policy for that, so that's the max for an individual for one year.
And just to be clear, some of the things that are paid for, so the district would pay for, like, any physical rehab that is being sent, if there was any legal fees, medical fees, also like lost wages, that all comes through this workers' compensation. Again, because we're self-funded, that's what we pay out and again, have that cap of 400,000 per person.
Okay, so I want to go back to that 400,000 dollars per person per year. So not that this is ever going to happen, but if we had 10 people that were severely injured during the year that the district had to cover, we would have to pay 400,000 times 10 if they're
I have a correction.
Okay.
I have a correction from one of my HR professional colleagues. It's 400,000 dollars per employee, per claim, not per year. So I want to be clear on that. So I said annually.
Okay.
It's per claim, and that claim may extend beyond a year. So I want to be clear, it can extend beyond a year. I said annually, that was my error.
Okay.
It's per claim.
Okay.
Per employee.
But still, if we had?
It's good to have, it's good to have friends who live with us day in and day out.
It's a collective, we, it's the synergy of a collective brain trust, so.
But I just want to be clear that we do have, that there is that cap. And beyond that, we have an insurance policy for that. That's really one of the things, because as you're self-insured, that's often something that a board or people may want to ask about and may want to know where that stands.
But I mean, that sounds like that can be, again, in extreme circumstances, but, you know, you never know what's going to happen. I mean, that could add up to be a lot of money in one year, could it not?
And like, for instance, looking at the fund balance, you could, you know, if you had three claims in a year that hit that max, that would be your entire, really your entire fund.
Only three claims?
Three times 400,000, 1.2 million, so, yep.
And, you know, and I, I mean, my husband's chronically ill, so, I mean, 400,000 in medical bills is nothing. I mean, that's easy to rack up, especially at the beginning of an injury. When you have all the hospital costs and stuff. I mean, that just doesn't sound like that fund balance is going to cover very much at all.
Mr. Centers?
So I have heard throughout my time here that some districts may have a separate fund for health and wellness, some others do not. In fact, I think we're probably one of just a couple that I'm familiar with. The, what is the rationale? Because this is money that could go into just a general fund, correct? And we could?
It could.
So what's the rationale in having it separated here?
Really, the history of it, you know, it was before my time, but I believe it was set up because we were self-insured and to protect the general fund from volatility. When you are paying out those claims, and again, you don't know how many people will get injured. Or back in the day when we were with the health insurance and you were paying out claims, the benefit of having your health and welfare in a separate fund is that you can protect your general fund for some of that, from some of that fluctuation. And ultimately, though, if there isn't, you know, enough in your health and welfare fund, you're going to be going to your, you know, your other funds, your general funds.
No, but this is a cushion for us. So, I mean, theoretically, in the bad years, if we didn't have any money in the health and wellness fund and we were running low, I mean, we could have theoretically had to cut programs in order to cover these costs, is that not true?
That's true. That would have been a matter of, for instance, in the slide I make reference that we could indirectly transfer the fund balance of the Health and Welfare Fund to the general fund, which would equate to about a 0.9% fund balance. But it wouldn't be, like, we couldn't just transfer the balance. But what that would be, would be a reduction in the transfers from the other funds. So instead of charging out 100% of the workers' comp or something, we'd only charge maybe 80% of the workers' compensation out to the various funds. And in essence, by reducing the expenditures in this fund, you'd be, I'm sorry, by reducing the transfers in, by reducing the revenue, you're reducing the fund balance, so. But it's been the history, you know, of the board and administration that it's been a recommendation to keep this money set aside, you know, again, to hedge us from fluctuations. One of the things too, we saw just this year was health insurance cost increases in both our life insurance and our long-term disability of almost 50% increases. And so having this money, you know, set aside in this fund balance gives us the flexibility to say, okay, is that something our funds or other funds can absorb? Or is that something we need to tap into this fund balance to help?
If I recall, several years ago, this was like a six, seven million dollar fund. And it's been spent down over the years, if I remember correctly. Am I correct in that? And if so, has it been spent down, has it been transferred? Do you recall how it got to its current level?
Yeah, it, in part of our negotiations, we agreed using, utilizing some of this fund balance to help with offsetting the employer contributions or by increasing employer contributions on the health insurance. So that was a planned use of the fund balance. And I can speak to when I came, the fund balance was, I know, at least 2 million dollars, maybe 2.2 million dollars. But, you know, I'd be happy to go back and look at a history of the fund too, over the last 10 years, to see what the changes in the fund balance have been here. But, yeah, much of this has been, you know, a planned use of that fund balance.
Sure, yeah, I think, you know, there is some use in seeing, you know, how this has been used and helped throughout the years.
Moving on, we have our debt retirement funds. And I'm sorry, this is very small on the PowerPoint slide, but honestly, not a ton to say about these. These debt retirement funds are restricted funds. And these are specifically for the purpose of repaying our outstanding bonds, repaying the interest and principal and other related expenditures. So we keep track of each one, each series in a separate fund. We're not required to do that, it could be all together. But we currently have the 2013 bond, Series 1, the 2013 bond, Series 2, and then our 2014 bond. So, you know, any, this is a levy, you know, we bring to the board every June our L4029 tax levy request. And so we take a look at what our upcoming principal and interest payments are going to be for the school year and then request that from our taxpayers. So any fund balance in here would need to be used to pay down that debt, it couldn't be used for any other purpose. The scholarship fund, not much change in here from the proposed budget, other than just updating the beginning fund balance. These are restricted funds, and I'd like to point out that these are donations. This is not any taxpayer money that gets put in here. And the expenditures out of this fund are in the form of scholarships to some of our high school students. Next up, we have the 2013 bond, and these are, again, restricted funds. The source of revenue is from the sale of bonds, the transfer from other funds, and investment earnings. And the expenditures out of this fund may only be used for voter-approved uses. And here you'll see the, you know, ending fund balance going down, and that's what you would expect to see. Our ending fund balance for 1718 was 30.7 million dollars. And we're projecting an ending fund balance this year of 3.6 million dollars. And that's because we're utilizing the funds for what they were given for. Next up is our sinking fund. These are restricted funds. The source of revenue is from tax revenue from a voter-approved millage, as well as interest earnings. The expenditures out of this fund help support our long-term facility plan. Sinking funds cannot be used to pay for salaries, textbooks, operational costs, other than building repairs or school buses. Our current sinking fund levy will expire in December 2019. As we discussed earlier, there's a lot of future discussion to be had on what we do and, you know, where we take this with our voters.
So our sinking fund has been in place in this district, in this model, for the past 20 years. And has provided, it's been renewed on every five years since that time. And again, we'll be bringing more information to you. As you see that expiration date, as you know, we have studied this for many months and have had some preliminary discussion at our study session. We'll bring this back to you in January for a plan to go back out to our voters next summer.
I just, I want to say, this, one, to thank the people in our district who have voted yes for this, because this is just an amazing amount of money that we can use. You have been able to utilize over the years to update and repair our buildings and that's.
We're grateful for it.
Thank you.
Next up is our technology fund. This is remnant from a bond passed a number of years ago for technology purchases across the district. These are restricted funds, and the source of revenue is from the sale of bonds and from interest earnings. The expenditures are, out of this fund are to help support some of the district's ongoing technology needs. And here you'll see we have bumped up the expenditures, the technology equipment, as discussed earlier. You know, we're looking to recommend additional purchase of Chromebooks and carts. And we're looking to utilize some of these funds to make that purchase. And then last but not least is our Capital Projects Fund. And it's been a while since we've looked, you know, at some detail of what the history was behind this one. So I wanted to include a brief history. I've copied in part of our board policy in there for reference, and I apologize for the small print, or small print. This fund was established in support of Board Policy EBA, and if you'll allow me, I will read it. The board policy as of April 2015 read that proceeds derived from the sale of real estate will be held in trust in a special Capital Projects Fund account, identified separately from any other capital project funds, which shall be used for the purchasing of other real estate for the district and/or for renovating, replacing, or developing real estate facilities or long-term assets as authorized by the Board of Education. Unless the fund balance of the district's general fund is below 5% of the total expenditures, at which time the Board of Education may determine to utilize proceeds in the general fund to protect the programs. And we made an update to this board policy in July of 2017. And now the above verbiage is found in our administrative procedures. And instead of referencing the 5%, we now reference the MSBO recommended fund balance, which currently is 15 to 20%. So this is a fund that's seen some activity through the years. Some years we see some activity and some years we don't, depends on, you know, what's going on. This capital, this fund, the district's capital improvement needs exceed what's provided through the current sinking fund levy and the 2013 bond. So this Capital Projects Fund is a way to set aside funds for capital improvements that are not covered by other sources. And the board policy and administrative procedures do not limit the source of revenue in the Capital Projects Fund to only those received from the sale of property. Sometimes there are one-time, you know, increases to the revenue, and it might be appropriate to recognize those as one-time increases. For instance, our transfer from the Special Ed Fund. And in those cases, maybe transferring some money generated from that, transfer into this Capital Projects Fund would be appropriate.
I just want to make a note to not confuse the board. I believe that the, on the presentation slide, the Capital Projects Fund information is actually the Technology Fund's information. And so I'd suggest that you take a look at the, your budget book in the Capital Projects Fund. And we will make the adjustment on this presentation and put the new page in there for you. But I just want to make note that the prior slide that showed the actual proposed and first amended budget should be reflected from the budget book, not the presentation page.
I am so sorry if I missed that.
A lot of numbers. So when we sold property last
So, Ms. Allison, so when we sold property last year, did it go into capital projec- projects, or did it go into?
Last year, um, it was put in the general fund, and our fund balance was below the MSBO recommended amount, so. That is something that is on our uh radar and something to discuss further with the um, the board too, as we notice when we take a look at our fund balance in the general fund, that we now have um hit that lower threshold of the MSBO uh recommendation, so, you know, discussions would be appropriate to, where would be the appropriate spot to put any sale of property proceeds we received this year. So with that, that takes us through all of our funds. If uh, if there's any outstanding questions, I'd be happy to answer those or comments.
Thank you for answering along the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
In detail, you get under faith, but very detailed.
So what we'd like to do is bring this to you um for your consideration, um, to vote at the regular meeting, um, with regard to the first budget amendment, um, and we have, I've uh noted that we have three questions that came up, and so we'll be sure to get those to you in your update. We'll also make sure that we share those um publicly at the meeting, so that folks who may have been watching the presentation with us this evening and heard those questions, that we get those answers um back out to, both you and the community, uh, but they will be in your packet on Thursday, and then we'll share them on Monday evening as well.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, thank you very much.
A lot of work.
And we're all good? Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay, I know we've been sitting for a little while. Um, so, uh, nothing too big or too small for Mrs. Smith, and we're gonna move from our overall budget to our paper purchase.
Thank you. Um, I'm bringing forward some additional information, this is something um we talked about in our study session, and I have some uh new information, just to give a bit of a background. Um, back in April of two thousand eighteen, we brought a paper purchase to the board for approval, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that would be for the um, all of the paper needs for the district, the copy paper needs of the district for the um eighteen nineteen school year. Um, I had the opportunity to talk with the sales manager from Contract Paper Group, Inc., and I also had the opportunity to take a look at the agreement and then the um, the following amendments too, that followed up that agreement. Um, one thing that I was under the impression of, and the amendments clarified for me, I, um, that the pricing wa- is not locked in for the entire school year, um, that in the latest amendment that was signed, there was an allowance for um price increases on a quarterly basis, and I've become to learn a bit about the paper process, paper mills and whatnot. Um, in speaking with the sales manager, I've learned that there was a closure of a paper mill recently that impacted their availability of product to um ship to the, ship to their customers. Um, and in talking through this with the sales manager, I truly believe that they did make their best effort to meet the um order that we put in. We had generated a purchase order um in the end of July. Um, on that purchase order, it did state that if there was any deliveries made in October, that those deliveries would be at the um dollar fifty per case higher cost, and so we took possession in September of everything that they had available, um, but again, because of the paper mill closing, they had limited inventory that they could sell, and so what they're asking for is um to pass on the costs that they've incurred, you know, it wasn't uh just kind of a random increase, it was because they received that increase, and it is allowed for in the contract, that they're asking for this dollar fifty per case increase for what uh was delivered to the district in October, and for us, that equates to just over five thousand dollars, so, um, is there anything else I have there?
All right.
And just to clarify, this is a contract that Wayne County RISA.
Thank you.
Um, negotiated, and we order within that contract.
That's correct. We do not have a separate signed contract with the company. This is us buying under their contract.
Okay, Mrs. Burton, was your question?
That was exactly my question.
Yeah.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis has a question.
Thank you for looking into this.
Yes, absolutely.
We had questions because it was so unusual, um, and you found that it really was an unusual situation, and I appreciate your due diligence.
My pleasure. Thank you for your pleasure, uh, for your patience in letting me get that information and bring it back to you tonight.
So, we need to, uh, no, this was, uh, this is under the limits, so we do not need to vote on this?
We're bringing it to you because it's part of a larger order that is above the board limit, and so.
So we do.
So you will vote.
Yes, we would like to put it on the agenda.
All right, so, in light of all the questions that we had, is every, are we comfortable with putting this on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for looking into it.
Thank you very much. I guess, I want to just clarify why I'm asking that question for any of our viewers, is because when we get to the board table, oftentimes, we have a unanimous vote on um issues, and the reason is, is that we um exhaust every possible question that we might have prior to bringing things to the board, so if we, any one of us has um questions or concerns, normally those are taken uh into consideration and answered prior to us getting to the board table, so that would be why I'm asking, because I'm certain if one of us had a question that was a concern about whether or not this was a good ide- this was gonna pass, that we would send Mrs. Els- uh, Mrs. Smith back for um additional research, and then we would not have put it on the agenda for next week. So it's just part of the process that we go through and, and why we often have a, a seven zero vote, is that we take this process very seriously, and if we're not ready to vote on it, it does not go to the table. Now, that doesn't mean that sometimes we don't get to the board table, and we've covered all the questions and we don't all agree, but on a lot of this stuff, most of the time, we can clear everything up and get everybody on the same page, so, thank you. Oh, uh, so, it's still up to me. So.
That moment of silence, let's go after you, Bob.
Um, okay, um, Mrs. Smith has um update on grants, which hopefully this means in money instead of out money.
Yes, yes. Um, what's coming around, I'm so sorry for the small text, so hopefully, next time I'll bring the uh magnifying glass with me, so we can all follow along. Um, for the sake of time, I'm very excited, we have a number of grants we have, so um what I've prepared for tonight is a detailed description of our federal grants, that's by and large our largest um source of grants, um, and then I thought I could follow up, um, either via memo or at our next meeting with the remaining grants, our local source grants as well as our state grants. Um, so I thought we could uh take a few, just to uh go through what federal grants we get. Um, I've also included on there a dollar amount, just to give you a reference. Um, the first one would be our IDEA Special Education Formula Grant, so this is uh funds from the federal grant, uh, from the federal government that are combined with state and local funds to provide vape, free and public education to children with disabilities, and this year we were um awarded three point eight million dollars, so.
Nice.
But definitely, we appreciate that. Um, the next is a similar grant, uh, IDA Preschool Formula Grant. Again, this is um based on a formula, how it gets allocated to the districts, and funds are provided to make available special education-related services for children's, children with disabilities aged three through five, and this year we saw just over two hundred thousand dollars awarded to the district for our preschool um program.
So these numbers, um, that we were awarded, it's because we, we applied for a grant, it's not necessarily like an FTE that we had, you know, seven hundred and fifty students that were involved, um, that needed special education from three to five, or is based on the student population that we service?
These are based on our student population.
Okay.
Um, there's two different types of grants, it's formula grants, which would be allocated based on our um students, and then um competitive grants, and competitive grants are ones that we have to apply for. Um, I will say, with the acceptance of these federal dollars, there's a lot of reporting requirements, and so I work very closely with my um cabinet colleagues. Um, we don't just, it'd be nice if they would just, you know, give us the three point eight million dollars and we'd be all set, but we have to submit detailed budgets to um first Wayne RISA who approves it. Um, the money flows through from the federal government to the state, and then the state gives it to the ISDs, and then the ISDs uh hand, or work with the uh local districts um to come up with these detailed budgets, and again, to make sure that we're using the funds uh in line with what the intent of the grant was, so.
Sorry, if you could educate me on why we call it a grant, if, if these students are in special education, there are, it's called a grant as opposed to just our um allowance for, yeah, yes, I, I mean, what, what is, I think of a grant as typically above and beyond everything, that you need to service them, but it seems like if we're s- this is something that we're getting every year?
Yeah, and it's very interesting, because when you talk about, like, for instance, we're specifically talking about our special um need students, um, when we look at the state funding, we don't refer to the state funding we receive for special education as a grant, but the federal government refers to these as grants, so that's disverbiage that we've carried on uh here in the district. And again, because we need to keep track of the revenues received and the expenditures, we um have found it helpful to include this in the funded projects fund for tracking purposes. This would very much, you know, it could be easily put over into our uh general fund, and we could track it there, but um even how we break out our responsibilities in our office, I'm responsible for the oversight of the general fund and, you know, a lot of the other funds, but specifically the grant fund, we have an accounting supervisor that oversees this, uh, oversees our grants, so, and then we also have an accounting supervisor that oversees our Act eighteen center program, so it's proved very helpful for us to have separate funds, because it helps with the uh delegating out the responsibilities of oversight of those funds.
And in addition to these, we do apply for a number of competitive grants as well.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
So, so these are just given to us?
Well, and I hate to say given, because you do have.
You still do have to apply, and you have to d- submit a detailed budget.
Oh, well, that's why it's called a grant, then.
And a rationale, um, but it's not necessarily a competitive grant.
Mm-hmm.
Right, if you apply, you get it.
Well, they.
If you apply with the appropriate.
Information.
Information, yes.
They'll typically tell us, okay, based on your population, you know, we have, the state has X amount of dollars, they've allocated certain amount to Wayne RISA, and then based on the Wayne RISA population, they'll allocate it out that way, but then again, before they'll give us a penny, we have to come up with a good plan of how we're gonna spend those funds.
Oh, sure, you have to have all the, right.
So there, there is a potential, if we did not follow all the rules, it's not just gonna show up on our doorstep.
Yes.
That there's a lot of time and effort that goes into this, and that the reason we do get this is because we do fulfill certain obligations that are extremely rigorous.
Yes, and I'd have to assume, thankfully, we've never been that a boat, but if you've, if you misuse the funds, there would definitely be the um chances that these aren't not gonna be awarded to you again in future years, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. The second page?
Um, okay, um, so we have a number of other federal grants with the descriptions there. Um, I'll move on to the second page, our state grants, a number of these that we do have to apply for that just aren't um allocated out to districts. Um, and I know our academic services department works really hard on putting these requests together, thank you, Teresa. Um, you know, one that specifically uh stands out to me is the early targeted assistance grant, that this year we have two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars available to us because our staff took the time to apply for these uh competitive grant funds. Um, another item would be the computer adaptive test, that's an application that had to be submitted and, you know, via competitive process, was allocated to the district. Um, same with the first robotics grant. Um, I'm not sure if Teresa remembers, I'm sorry, the section forty-one bilingual education grant, I think, do you know if that's the bilingual education grant?
It's for English language department.
And we had to apply for those ones, correct? Yes, so that would be a competitive grant as opposed to a formula grant. And we're very lucky in our district to have a number of local grants, um, the, you know, one that stands out too, our Levonia Public Schools Foundation Grant, we are so grateful for that, and I know so many uh people are impacted by that, we appreciate all the work that they put into that, um, in going through all the different applications and making their recommendations. Um, we've had a few other things that we've applied for, one of them, and I'm not sure if this was academic services or um our HR office, was a Wayne RISA Evaluation Training Grant, you know, with everybody moving to these different evaluation models, um, RISA made some funds available to support that uh process. Um, the Wayne RISA Positive Behavior Support Grant is also not a formula grant, that's something that we have to apply for and is competitively then distributed out to um the districts that apply, so.
Mrs. Smith, how do we become aware of a lot of these grants? I know in some of my nonprofit circles that we talk about, there's a lot of money left out there on the table, because a lot of times people don't apply for grants. Um, how do we become aware of these grants, and what measures do we take to make sure that we're capturing as many dollars as we can?
A lot of it is, uh, not just my office, but across the district, so many of our staff are on different listservs that are um quick to share about grant opportunities, so we read through those, uh, also checking out different websites on occasion to see what's happening, kind of following the news, so we've got um various means of recognizing that, and we do our best to apply for any grants that would benefit our students. Um, there can definitely be time involved, I know, um, the most recent one that would be a competitive grant was the um school bus transporti- I'm sorry, school bus purchase uh grant, and that was something that our um transportation supervisor and accounting supervisor went and attended a half-day workshop on, workshop on, to make sure that they were um hitting all the, the things that the um, their grantees were looking for, um, and then spent at least two days, you know, over the course of two days, working together to get that application submitted, so we definitely take it seriously, because we realize that they can equate to some pretty significant dollars for our district. So, it's definitely a team effort, it's definitely not just our office that's aware of that, I would say that's across the um district, and if somebody else, you know, sees something there, you know, they'll uh forward it on to us too, so we can do some research on it to see if we'd be eligible.
Okay, Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I'm just curious to know, do, do we have a dedicated grant writing team, or is this representative of individuals in different departments?
This is really representative of individuals in different departments. We do have somebody designated, you know, our accounting supervisor wears many hats, and one of them is oversight of the finances for the grants, to make sure that we're using them as they were intended, but um to say that she has time in her day, you know, to do all of the grant writing for the district would not be a fair statement, so we rely on everybody, you know, keeping an eye out. Um, one thing that comes to mind that we spent a lot of time on, um, was the Marshall Plan, you know, the application for that, there were so many hands involved in that, and um, you know, we really appreciate that, because we do not have a designated grant writer, so, uh, we appreciate everybody's work.
Um, how do, I know we have some teachers that individually will apply for grants, is that correct? And how do we account for those grants? Do those wind up be reflected in the general fund, or are those usually just reimbursed grants where the teachers spend the money and then they get reimbursed for it? How does that, how does that work for the individual teacher?
Typically, depending on how the grant works, we would set up an account for them in the funded projects fund. One thing that comes to mind is, um, we used to get a number of Bright House Networks grants, and those were ones that individual teachers would apply for and could get up to five hundred dollars for the classroom, so we would sp- set up an account for them, so that they could, they wouldn't have to make it in one purchase, and we would handle it for them. We always encourage um staff that the um, the best option would be for, if you're going to be receiving funds, number one, to have the funds made out directly to Levonia Public Schools, but otherwise, that you could then transfer the funds to us or write a check to the district, and the benefit of that is, um, then we take on the responsibility for those items and purchasing those items, and as a um local school, we are able to make sales exempt purchases, so that's something too, that um our staff can get more bang for their buck, you know, if they allow uh the purchase to be made through our purchasing processes, so, um, typically, that's how it's worked. Depends on how the donation comes in too, if it's for like a general um support of, say, a particular building, depending on the dollar amount, that might be put into one of their activity counts, but if there's any kind of tracking that needs to be done to assure the funds are spent on the specific purpose they were given, then we'll set up a specific account, so we can follow through on that.
Thank you. Did somebody else have their hand up? No? Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any information? Okay, or questions, and this was in, uh, this was for FYI, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, that will conclude finance.
Very good, and we have been here pushing three hours, anybody want to take about a five-minute break?
Yes.
Is that work?
Thank you.
We'll be back. We'll be back. Okay, we are back, and we are going to move on now to Item Five, Curriculum Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have one item on the Curriculum Committee tonight, which is the English Language Arts 9-10 update, and we will hear from Mrs. O'Brien and Mrs. Finkel.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Finkel, our Language Arts and Social Studies Coordinator is joining us this evening to share an update for ELA 9-10 Committee that she has been working with, that actually today has resulted with a recommendation to purchase a textbook.
Yeah.
So, we are very excited to share with you where we are with this committee. As I've shared at study session, this committee has been working for multiple years on updating their curriculum and their practices in order to meet the rigors of the Michigan State Standards. Over the last several years, they looked at materials like the MACI units and determined they didn't want to go forward with the MACI units, talked about writing their own units, began doing that, and then when the Wayne County Enhancement Millage was passed and we had funds in our textbook adoption budget, decided to look at what materials were out there. So, last year, they began the process of looking at materials, six different textbooks in all, and chose two to pilot, and ended the year with a top choice, that then they began this year doing some extended teaching with. So, at this point, I'm going to let Mrs. Finkel share with you about her committee and where they've ended up today.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
You have in front of you a proposal for a recommendation of the ninth and 10th grade ELE, ELA program. It's called Study Sync, and it's a product of McGraw-Hill. So, it is a digital textbook and curriculum resource that we're recommending for ninth and 10th grade. You can see that there's a wide representation of committee members that have served on this committee, and it's really been five years that they've been working together, just the last year working on a textbook adoption. So, yes, a long, a long time in coming, so I'm really happy to be there on their behalf today and to make this recommendation. As I said, Study Sync is a digital product, so one of the things that's true is that it will continue to be updated, which is kind of exciting. The materials that we'll be purchasing will include, for each teacher, a print copy of the teacher guide, so this is what the print copy looks like. This is just for one unit, and there are four units for each grade level. And then they'll also receive a digital license. The students will receive a print journal, and then they'll also have a digital license. So, the print journal is also one per unit, so this is just for the first unit, and it includes print copies of the text that they'll be reading. You can see the indication on the numbers that we're going forward with in our quote, and I want to tell you just a little bit about the course. It is a very, we are moving into the future with this particular purchase because it could be a fully digital project. These journals can also be purchased, so whatever you're getting here in terms of the short text are also on the digital platform. So, some teachers like to use a little of both with students looking at the texts and highlighting and making notations, and then others, you can also do that through the digital platform. So, variety, some teachers are doing both, but they're really kind of moving, moving more and more towards the digital and away from the print copy. So, for each grade level, there are four units. The units are organized around a single theme and an essential question. So, if you look on, it's page three, it lists all of the themes and essential questions for each unit. So, I'm looking at, and right here is the empathy, is the theme, and the essential question that's launched at the beginning of the unit is, how does human compassion inform our understanding of the world? So, throughout the unit, they keep coming back to this question and this theme, and at the end of the unit, they will have read multiple texts, multiple short texts that vary in genre, so they might be poems, fiction pieces, informational pieces, that are all united by this theme and that students are looking at with both a close, a first read and a close read in order to gather evidence to eventually answer a question that is their final writing piece. So, each unit starts with that big question, and then it is answered through a final prompt that links to that theme and that question in a, an essay. The, the unit, the units can be standalone, you can also purchase novels to go alongside the units, and so that the novel would also connect to the theme. And Levonia Public Schools teachers are very interested in having one novel per semester at both ninth and 10th grade, and we, we know that much, but we have not yet determined the novels that we will choose yet. So, that's work that we still have to do. In evaluating the, the different textbooks, we use the board policy procedures for textbook We created a, a vision, and I think our, our vision is really important because it really reflects new directions that we would like to go in terms of English Language Arts learning. Access to a rich source of complex texts and a variety of genres, a large representation of nonfiction, which is really one of the shifts that's suggested in the Common Core State Standards. Integration of diverse voices and cultural perspectives within a unit, and more positive portrayal of all peoples. Alignment to the standards and provision of learning targets. Opportunities for close reading that move from literal to complex ideas, and then modeling through a common text and moving into independent praxis as well. So, that's the gradual release model. You can see our, we had a evaluation criteria that we established, so as we looked at the different textbooks that we were considering, we used a rubric, and these were the criteria that were a part of the rubric. There were, as Mrs. O'Brien said, six textbooks that we looked at, and then as a result of our evaluation, we determined My Perspectives by Pearson and Study Sync by McGraw-Hill to pilot. We spent a couple weeks on each textbook, and then we did a survey at that time of both teachers and students, and the results were really very similar with Study Sync being slightly higher than My Perspectives. And ultimately, our decision was related to just the ease of navigation of the digital platform and also a very rich library in addition to what's studied in each unit. So, there are other texts that can be used in a variety of ways, like a thousand texts available to our teachers. We have some quotes from, from students. Students appreciated the opportunity to really work on identifying text-based evidence. They really liked the diversity of texts that, that were available to them within the course of the unit. So, we're no longer studying a novel or studying one genre, but really every unit has that diverse exposure to multiple genres. So, it's, there's a lot of variety. Students actually had varying opinions on the experience of, of using a digital platform, and I'd say that was really mixed at this point, with some of them preferring the print and others preferring the digital platform, but students did comment on the use of some of the tools, such as highlighting and using a split screen. So, they have a lot of experience navigating the digital platform and using its tools. Another student commented just on the opportunities for interaction within the classroom, lots of collaboration, lots of, lots of discussion. So, that's what really felt different to them in their experience with Study Sync. We've identified professional development needs. All of our 9-12, 9-10 teachers would have a full day of professional development in, in January, and then following that, over time, there would be some half-days to help teachers get ready for the next unit. So, that's taking us into, through 2019. What questions might you have?
Mrs. Burton? You mentioned taking notes. Is the, the student print version, is that a consumable?
Yes.
Okay. That is my question, too. Is it free?
Yes, it is. So, initially, we have a quote for two years of purchases for every student. I have one teacher right now that is not using it at all. So, in the future, we'll want to order the textbooks based on the needs of, or who's planning to use them, and so the, the consumables that we get for the first two years will be our initial supply to draw from.
Okay. And then it's, if we have enough for each teacher for those two years, if there are some that aren't utilizing it, perhaps their supply could even go into the third year-
Yes, right.
Depending on who needs them in the third year.
Yep.
Good point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Brad? Thank you. Can these units, I know how they say, Unit One, Unit Two, can you use them in different order, or do they start with Unit One and go to Unit Four? Could you start with Unit Four and go-
It's recommended that you, that you go in order because of the way that the skills build.
Okay.
And the recommendation is that you do the first three units. The fourth unit is kind of coming back and providing additional praxis with skills that were previously taught, and certainly, you know, engaging with a new theme.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Frank? I just have a couple, a couple of questions. One, you said it has the opportunity to be fully digital. That means the textbook is fully digital, but the teacher is still doing the instruction, is that correct? Or they're getting all their instruction digitally?
Yes.
No?
Yes. This is, this is not a product that can, that's going to be successful without really good teachers.
Okay.
So, in the teacher edition, there are extensive suggestions for how to provide that modeling and guidance for students, that supported praxis, and then, you know, leading students toward independent praxis.
So, if a parent gets nervous that their kid is going to be sitting in ELA just watching a video and checking the box on something that's not, they're still going to be in a traditional classroom where it's taught by a teacher, and their, their homework or Or a lot of the teaching is also on the computer? Digital?
There are some things that can be viewed or praxis independently. But the core instructional path is teacher facilitated.
Okay. And then what do we do as a district for students who don't have digital access at home? Do we have options for them? I don't know if there's very many students in our district that don't, I mean, I don't think that we've gone to a fully digital, is this our first textbook that's fully digital as a district? Do we have a plan for students who don't have that access at home? I don't know if that is something that is...
That might come up.
That might come up or not.
So currently, the consumable has the short pieces in it. It might not have everything that the online version has, but it has the core path in the consumable.
Correct.
Yes, it does. So yes, I mean, they could, these could be a solution for students. They can also access the program through their phone, which is not ideal, but the teachers are telling you that their students are doing that. Or we could make adaptations for, on a case-by-case basis.
So one of the things, Mrs. Frank, and we're not quite ready to roll out a plan on this, but one of the things that we've had extended discussion is, as our textbooks, even if we're purchasing our textbooks, but we know the extensions of their learning have been enriched on what's available in the digital resources. For instance, with our World Language purchase that the board approved last year. And so we are exploring some possibilities of how to best utilize the Chromebooks for our students for perhaps use extended beyond the school day. So we're still working through that process. Right now, we are, we've beefed up the ELA Chrome cards in order to be able to support the extended teaching of this program. It's a great question and it's one that we've had a lot of dialogue about. We're not quite ready, quite ready to bring that to the board, but certainly have done some thinking on that.
Perfect. And so you said that there was two that we were close with, My Perspectives and the StudySync. Both of those were piloted in the district?
Mm-hmm.
They were both piloted last year?
In the spring, they were each piloted for two weeks.
Okay.
So we have continued our trial of the, of StudySync in order to answer questions that we still had about the product. The first two weeks, the way that the units flow, you know, you really start with a lot of close reading and then the end is really where you do the writing. There's opportunities for reading and writing throughout, but the essay writing is at the end. So we felt like we still had a lot of questions. And so we took this semester to really make sure that our questions were answered before going forward with this proposal.
And the committee did feel like their questions were answered today?
Yeah.
And then my last question is that it's not available to the district yet, to the ELA teachers because the board hasn't approved it, correct?
Well, it is. We have quite a few teachers that have access right now because they've been using it. And in addition, the McGraw-Hill publisher was kind enough to give each teacher a copy of Unit Two, the teacher's edition. And then in order to access online, it's available to everyone through their website as a, as a free trial. And you can see everything that's on the program. So teachers, all ninth and 10th grade teachers have had an initial orientation at the November Professional Development Day. And then they were given those resources so that they could, you know, begin to dabble. And then in January, we want to have a full day of professional development for all ninth and 10th grade teachers.
Okay. And then my last question is just, I think we talked in depth in the study session about this is, this is transformational in terms of our district, of a new way of teaching and a new way of looking at things. So in my old way of looking at things, I look at ELA and I say, what are the responsibilities of power? What makes a dream worth pursuing? And I think I want my kids to know how to use the apostrophe correctly and that sort of thing. So when you look at this, are we still teaching what the kids need to know in terms of ELA? Because I think that some of the fear is just that this is such a new way that we're going to lose some of the historical way that we've taught. But I think there's a balance of both. Is that correct?
In terms of the skills, we are fully aligned to the Common Core State Standards, which do include grammar. And so we're certainly addressing that. There's also a very comprehensive grammar resource that allows opportunities for review. So we still have a lot of work to do in terms of combing through the program and lifting the work of the standards that we have identified as a priority.
Okay.
So there's still a lot of work ahead of us in terms of really curriculum mapping.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
I'm just going to the cost on the back. And on your second page, it says seven-year digital licenses. But in the, which is the second to the last page and the third to the last page, it's showing student five-year subscriptions.
So the reason for that is that you get one price for if you purchase both the digital and consumable as a bundle. And that's the cheapest way to get them both, is to purchase them as a bundle. So for the first two years, we've purchased the bundle. And then for the following five years, we have only the digital that we've included in this quote.
We wanted to make sure that people were going to use the consumable before we agreed to purchase seven years of that. Especially with all digital platform and there's multiple opportunities for students to either work in a Google Classroom or email their teachers their assignments. There's, that shift could occur pretty strongly in the next two years and then we have seven years. So we originally did have a quote for seven years of both. And we had a conversation and said, maybe we should get the consumable for the first couple of years, see where our needs are at. If we want to add that back in, we would be coming back to and asking for that. But at this point, we want to make sure teachers are using it rather than just sitting there on a shelf.
And then under the teacher, it does say seven years, but that's because, you know, the consumables are not involved.
Right.
They get that teacher set, teacher edition, four volumes set.
But just one time for them.
Right.
Okay. And it looks like all of the teachers' subscriptions are, everything there is a free material.
Correct.
Okay.
So the total for materials is $208,413 and all the teacher materials are free. And then there's an additional $11,000 shipping and handling, which would be for, and that's an estimate for the consumables and the teacher guides to be shipped to the district.
And the taxes to be determined as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonifield?
So it sounds like this is going to be a pretty big, as Mrs. Frank pointed out, a pretty big shift for our district. I think it's really, really exciting. But it also, some, some of us were born before the digital age and need a little more help than others. Is there plans to maybe get feedback from the teachers and develop further professional development? Or as you said, there's still a lot to be pulled out of the text and to really, this isn't just a, hey, here's the book, you guys need to teach it, but that there's a plan to continue to kind of grow and, you know, morph with the, with the program and really to get the most out of it?
So there's professional development in, already built in.
Yep.
And that's one of the reasons why the committee extended into this school year, so that they could be a resource to other teachers, having used it for longer and more deeply. It does open up more questions and things they want to get deeper with, which is part of, I mean, today's committee worked so hard to come up with solutions for the questions that they had and still move forward with a recommendation to use these materials that there was support with wanting to use StudySync and knowing this is a big shift. This is how I teach, my teaching strategies plus my curriculum. So there's both of those shifts. And there's, it's, it's going to make a strong impact on our ELA and 910 classrooms.
I just, I think it's really exciting. And I think sometimes it's not about the teacher. There's, there's a journey that, you know, the kids go on. And sometimes I think the teacher's going on that journey a little bit with the kids.
Oh, yeah.
It keeps it fresh and it keeps everybody engaged. And it's really exciting when you learn new things, right? You know, it's one of the things, it's like you learn something new every single day. And of course, our children have the opportunity to do that because they're in school. And hopefully they, you know, they gain a level of learning. But I just think it's, we have an idea that, you know, teachers are supposed to be, you know, the, know everything 100% when they get up in front of the classroom. And I just think it's great to be creative and have that flow and learn and discover things together. And so I hope the teachers really, you know, I know it's scary and they've got to get up and, and teach in front of 30 kids. But, you know, I think with the way that our society is now, that it's, it is collaborative and it is a way to grow and that we're all learning as we go along. And then, and that that is just part of the journey to get there. I think it's going to be really fascinating and engaging for the kids and the teachers.
Mrs. Zobis?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. In addition to the professional development that's being provided by the company, could you share a little bit about how we're going to support those instructional shifts for teachers, either with members of the committee or at the school level or at the district level? What responsibilities are we taking on to be able to support teachers as they become acclimated to this new resource and utilizing it in their classroom?
Well, this past semester, I visited classrooms in all buildings twice. And so as I visited, I, I got the questions from the teachers and also, you know, made some observations. And then as a result of that, I planned a training. So I think the first professional development, well, we have, the first is the full day, which the committee helped me to plan. And then I have another one scheduled for late February and that will be based on, you know, what I glean. And so I have to say that, you know, I'm trying to be really responsive and then plan accordingly. We've had great support from StudySync and we can certainly, if it seems like they're going to be our best resource, we can bring them back over and above what we've planned for here. And then in addition, we have growing expertise amongst the teachers that have tried it. And so we could create some opportunities for collaboration that way, some learning labs. So I think that what we have planned in here is the bare bones of what we're going to do. And then from there, I think it's just upon me to be really responsive and to plan according to the needs.
Today, one teacher at one of our high schools talked about that the focus of their collaborative learning times for their department has been StudySyncs and the shifts that teachers need to make from teaching Grapes of Wrath to teaching the standards. And although our teachers know we're focused on the standards and they say the standards are in that, that book, this is different. You know, these are shorter texts, it's different kinds of texts. And so this committee member, you know, has taken it upon herself to continue to do that. The chairs are also, you know, our department chairs in each high school are a part of that constant conversation of shifting towards focusing on the standards. So we know that that's something we need to continue to do. This product's going to help with that. I think being aware and in the building so that we can support as needs come up is probably the most important thing over the next year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Frank?
Just one more question. This is just ELA, ninth and 10th, right? There's been no decision on 11?
Right.
Correct.
Questions or comments?
Is 11 and 12 next?
Yep. It is.
And we get to take this to the vote?
We are voting. Yes, we would love to take this to the vote.
This is great.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to share more information with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They're at that stage.
President Johnson, that concludes the question committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. And that will take us to item six, our policy committee and our chair, Mrs. Burke.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Mr. Archibald. The first item on our policy today this evening is board policy, G A M A, alcohol and drug abuse.
Good evening. Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. I'll try to lead you through this in an expeditious fashion. We first talked about this policy, began reviewing it in October. I just want to do some of that quick history. And then it was following that meeting that we thought with proposal one regarding the use of recreational marijuana, to wait and see the outcome of that election before, and then revising the policy accordingly. But we've had some subsequent discussions. And so what I bring you tonight is the collection of a couple of different periods of discussion. The revised form that you have there, the area that's highlighted in blue and the document you have is two-sided, those are areas that we have reviewed at committee, the whole meeting previously, and to the best of my recollection, had discussed and agreed to what is, the changes reflected there. Moving on to the changes that are now listed in yellow, which some again need further discussion tonight, which will bring you to your attention. We have incorporated the term marijuana into this policy. Again, it's difficult today to open your emails without getting something from a law firm regarding the implications of the recreational marijuana policy. But succinctly as I can, school districts still control the employment setting, so similar to alcohol, which is essentially how we're wording it into the policy. The school districts can still prohibit an employee from using marijuana on school grounds or being under the influence while on duty. And those are the changes that we've made to the policy to reflect that. It's still against the law federally, so these changes aren't actually necessary for it to be illegal. But we did think it was necessary or appropriate to spell it out very clearly in the policy to eliminate the likelihood of any confusion for any of our employees. So again, on the first page, the changes you see there, we added the term unlawful before drugs. The thought process there was that it could be a prescription medication, therefore we added unlawful and inserted the term marijuana. If you flip over onto the backside, again, the blue sections, unless you ask me to, I won't review them again. In that opening paragraph, employees may not bring, all the new language there is highlighted in yellow, marijuana or unlawful drugs into school buildings or onto work sites at any time. Consume or be under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs while on school property during their work hours or while serving in any capacity as a school district employee. Again, that would cover onsite, offsite, as a paid position or volunteer. The next paragraph, again, we inserted marijuana or other drugs to be consistently flowing throughout the policy. And then lastly, in the last paragraph, we touch on this in a couple of different areas with respect to the violation of the policy, but we wanted to end it again with a clear statement that a violation of this policy could lead to disciplinary action up to and including discharge. And so we just provided that additional type.
Are there comments? Mrs. Bradford?
I just have a question on that second paragraph on the back page. You said, or other drugs. You wouldn't want to insert, or other unlawful drugs? To be consistent or no?
The, the beginning of that sentence, it is referring to unlawful?
Unlawful possession. Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I didn't see that.
Other questions?
Other questions or comments?
I've got a few that I wanted to run by you and see if these are worth putting in or not. The first page, the second paragraph, this is kind of where it's still setting the stage for why we're doing what we're doing. I'm suggesting that we may want to consider, instead of the use, the word use, we may want to use the word abuse. Because of the growing concerns regarding the, it says, "the use of alcohol and drugs" and their potential impact with respect to the educational process. Because this entire policy, I mean by its own title, is talking about abuse. And then, we, this is the only paragraph that I found where it flips to using the word "the use of alcohol or drugs." I mean, that could imply use of prescription, you know, prescription drugs or so forth. Take a look at that for a moment and see what you think.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is there one, one specific instance that you're referring to?
It's twice the same paragraph.
And where is that again?
Yes, because of the growing concerns regarding the use of alcohol and drugs, their impact, and right there would suggest we may want to say the abuse of alcohol and drugs, their potential impact with respect to the educational process, student safety and employee safety, health, efficiency and productivity. And here's where it comes up again, this board policy regarding abuse of alcohol and drugs has been adopted and is based on these important principles. Because this is, I'm just suggesting that it may be, we may want to put abuse in there to be consistent with the title and what the whole policy is about. I can live with it either way, but that was my first suggestion. Mrs. Jarvis, and then?
Well, I see your point and I understand what you're saying. There are parts of this policy that do in fact, deal with the use of alcohol and/or illegal drugs such as during working hours or on campus. That is unrelated to abuse. So I think use is a broader term. Or we could say use and abuse.
Like I said, I can live with it either way. I just, it was, it just kind of jumped out at me. President Johnson?
I'm looking at two things. We sort of use abuse and use at different points throughout this. And one thought was to just change abuse in the title to just use and then just use, use throughout. Because there's a sentence that says employees who abuse alcohol, but then we talked about the use. So we're using the terms multiple times in the document. And I agree, maybe we need to be more consistent with that term and decide whether we want to use abuse or use. And I agree with Mrs. Jarvis that use, I think, is a more encompassing term than abuse.
Well, and part of it too, is that it can be the lawful use of alcohol and it can be the abuse of illegal drugs. So I mean, this one policy really does cover both. We may just want to leave that suggestion alone and not, and just leave it as same use. Mrs. Oakley?
Let me suggest that there are, I think, appropriate uses of each in the policy, which it may begin to cause confusion if we try to go with all of one or all of the other. And I'll give you a specific example. In bullet three on the first page, the intended bullets, it talks about while individuals, employees make choices regarding the use of alcohol and drugs, that would be appropriate there.
Right.
Because they may use it without abusing it. In the, in the bullet below, it said employees should seek treatment, counseling and/or rehabilitation for abuse of alcohol or drugs. And in each of those cases, I think the wording that was chosen is appropriate. So if there's a specific abuse or use that someone may want to suggest, I think we can consider that, but I would suggest we not make a blanket change because there, I think there are appropriate uses of each of those words contained within the document.
And in that light, I think I just would retract my suggestion of changing the word use in, in the second paragraph. And let's just, seeing as it's somewhat of an introductory paragraph into the policy, I think we should just leave it as, as it's written. I do have a couple of other things I wanted to throw out there for.
If I can make one more comment related to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
President Johnson made an interesting point about changing the heading line from abuse to use, which I think would be appropriate because it is, you know, in order to abuse it, you must first use it, but it is possible to use it without abusing it. And it would cover that broader sense without limiting. And we don't want someone saying, "Well, I wasn't in violation of this policy because I wasn't abusing."
But I think the whole policy is if they're using on school property, it's an abuse, whether or not it's.
It's an abusive thing.
Right, because I don't, I think that it's important that our staff doesn't think, or trying to dictate alcohol and drug use outside of this district, I mean, outside of their, like we said on the backside of, the only thing we're talking about is just while on school property during their work hours or while serving in the capacity of a school district. So I think to say use, it might mislead somebody to think that we're trying to.
Right.
Legislate their behavior.
Exactly.
Or their personal time.
That's made amply clear within the text of the policy.
Right.
And we are in fact, trying to limit alcohol use with regard to this policy.
During work hours.
During work hours. Exactly.
Keeping in mind, if I may, I thought that Mrs. Jarvis was moving into a Dr. Seuss written earlier. But if you, the only references that I see to abuse are referring to the employee assistance program and seeking assistance or help with regard to that. If you did change the title and that tagline to use, again, it is within the personnel section of the board policy manual. So we aren't, the only behaviors that we're really dictating are those related to the individual's employment and specific to the use of drugs and alcohol. So, you know, again, keep in mind what that title is intended for and that's when we're looking, searching the manual, looking for particular policy and that will be fine. So I, you know, if, I don't see issue with making that change and turning it to use because of its broad nature or leaving it the same, whatever you wish.
Can we do alcohol and drug use slash abuse? That would cover both?
Given that the policy covers both, that makes sense.
Mrs. Oakley? What is more consistent in our policy book? You know what I mean? Like, is it?
I think what we're trying to avoid is abuse.
Right.
I think we're trying to avoid abuse and I think either one technically, you know, as both Mrs. Jarvis and Mr. Archibald said, could be utilized and could be correct. But just to be clear, we're, again, we're not trying to legislate alcohol use amongst our employees. We're talking about specifically this situation as it relates to the work environment and their role as a member of the staff. So, in that case, they would be abusing the, those items.
Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you. That's how I'd interpret that. It would, if they're on school grounds and they're, they're partaking in any type of alcohol or drug, they are abusing it on property. So I would keep abuse in the top.
That's what I would lean toward also. Are there other thoughts?
I can live with that.
Mr. Sanders?
My thought is, so if we have use or abuse, does it change the way you implement the policy?
No.
So, yeah, I think either one is fine.
I agree. I don't think it changes the intent.
Right.
A second suggestion I had is on the third bullet point that we may want to add or while serving in any capacity as a school district employee, just for consistency. It currently reads, "All employees must be alert and in full possession of all faculties whenever they are on school district property." Just for consistency on the second page, we've added, "or while serving in any capacity as a school district employee." So I suggest that we put it in both places.
Good point.
Agreed.
I like that.
Is everyone all right with that? Yes, okay. The next suggestion is just a picky thing, but first page, second to the bottom paragraph really, for lack of any, where it reads, "The Board of Education has established the following specific policies." This is one policy. So I think what really should be replaced with a word such as regulations or I'm open to other suggestions of a different word, but it's not, like the following bullet points are not the following policies. This is a policy. So we just need to replace that word with, I can deal with, I can take regulations or I'm open to other suggestions.
Do you think they meant each of those bullets as a policy?
They did, but this is the policy. It's like, it's, it's just the wrong use of the word. I think that is exactly what they intended.
Guidelines?
Or guidelines or tenants?
I could live with any of those.
I think that would make more sense.
Guidelines is the word that popped in my head.
That's fine with me. It just needs to not be policies because this, it's the wrong use of the word.
I'd ask for some additional thinking on that as we're talking about conditions of employment being simply a guideline.
I agree with you.
It might be something a little bit stronger like.
That's like a suggestion.
Yeah, right. More of the following suggestions.
Expectations?
Oh, stipulations. Principles?
Principles? Yeah?
Why do we need, why can't we just say the Board of Education has established the following regarding the use of?
Yeah, there you go. Oh, there you go.
You are awesome.
Don't spread it around.
I add when you can just delete.
There we go. That takes care of that. I also wondered, at the very top, the very top few words on the second page, when they report for work. That sentence reads, "As a condition of employment, all employees must be free from unlawful drugs and the effects of unlawful drugs, alcohol or marijuana during scheduled work hours and when they report for work." When they report for work is part of scheduled work hours unless they're getting at something that I'm not catching here.
That's related to use.
If I get to work early, the expectation is I'm coming to work, I'm still at work, I'm serving in my capacity as an employee, I'm expected to be.
Okay.
It's outside work hours.
Okay.
You're at your work early.
Don't show up and expect that to.
That's how I would interpret that.
Okay, we'll leave it. And then, just a grammatical thing, second page, second line, right in the middle of that, we need to add a comma.
Semi-colon.
It's, or what, yep, I could live with that. Where it reads, "Employees may not bring alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs into school buildings or onto work sites at any time," comma.
Semi-colon.
Okay, semi-colon. "Use, consume, or be under the influence, et cetera." Because right now, it reads, "into school buildings or onto work sites at any time, use, consume."
Thank you.
That's it for me. Anybody else have any other suggestions?
You've done a great job.
Mr. Archibald, thank you very much for, this sounds like it would be an easy thing to do, just add marijuana in there and it was far from an easy thing. So thank you very much.
It was a sober experience.
Yeah, that's our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this will be on our next agenda for first reading.
For first reading, and can I ask that?
Yes.
In our next packet, that we get just a clean copy?
Yes.
So that we can read it without all the, trying to read between lines with all the adjustments or maybe a clean copy and then?
I think, yeah, Mrs. Wozniak typically, lately I've noticed, she's been giving us one clean copy and then one marked up copy.
I would.
Which helps because sometimes I want to see, what did we change in that line again?
Yeah, but I would really like to just see the clean copy so I can just read right straight through. Okay, so first reading.
Yep. And now, we're going to hear from Mr. Willenborg on item two, which is combining board policy J H slash.
We just got warmed up with tea.
Slash J H C A.
You want to take your jacket off?
Student Clubs and Activities.
Thank you, Vice President Burton.
Bring us home, Mr. Willenborg.
We started on this path of policy progress last week at our study session, where I proposed that we take policy J H Student Activities and policy J H C A Student Clubs and combine them into a new policy, sagaciously and sensibly named J H Student Clubs and Activities.
There we go.
Reasoning behind that thinking and that suggestion, that proposal, is that as you read the two policies, you'll note that, you know, there's very similar verbiage in each and it's, you can almost use those terms, clubs and activities, you know, interchangeably. You know, and that essentially, they have identical meanings, you know? So, that's why I propose, put them into one policy. You know, the new policy does, written in red in your packet there, then, you know, does provide some definitions of clubs as a group of common interested students and activities as an event, you know, that all must be approved through the school administration and sponsored by school-approved personnel. You know, and this paraphrases, takes pieces of the old policy, but the new policy makes clear that our clubs and activities provide equal access to all students. You know, that demeaning initiations and harassment of club members is strictly prohibited. And those clubs and activities whose pronouncements or actions do not align with the mission and vision of the school or the district, you know, will be denied or terminated their association with, you know, the school or the district. You know, so, I trust you've had a chance to read through that, but there's, there's what I propose is that new policy. Now, the policies had a combined, the two policies had a combined nine administrative procedures and I can quickly run through those if you'd like.
If you'd like, go right ahead.
And I'll start with what I'm proposing that we keep, which would start with senior trips. And we'd call this administrative policies, senior trips, and it's in there to particularly provide some guidance regarding the district not sponsoring, not supporting, you know, cultural trips overseas for instance, or a spring break trip of seniors. You know, and it says, "The district does not support in principle or with financial assistance those celebratory, you know, senior trips." You know, and don't misunderstand, I mean, the intent here, we certainly find, they can be very valuable trips, but the district would not be prudent or probably not responsible to assume the liability, you know, for those trips generally sponsored through third-party vendors. We keep the funds out of the school district. You know, we'd like to try to keep it that the district does not endorse or support, sponsor these trips.
Mrs. Frank? Mr. Willenborg, although, no, nevermind. What about, we do have, we do have cultural trips, right? That like the global education. So, how does that align with it? I mean, it's not, it's not a celebratory, but it says cultural trips that do not occur within the student, you know what I'm saying? Like, how do we separate that out?
I'd separate it out by the time and the year. I mean, if it's during the school calendar.
Okay.
And it's a, you know, what we refer to as a field trip, you know, we are responsible. But if it's happening after this student calendar year, you know, after June, mid-June, into July, you know, generally, we're not sponsoring that.
Mrs. Bradford?
I thought the global ed trip, they were looking into going over spring break this year. That's, that's what I've heard, that they, the students asked.
And that's what I would say, I mean, there's going to be nuances throughout this, but that being between. but that being between this, during the school year, you know, what I was referencing when I said spring...
It's off school time.
Right. What I was referencing particularly was, you know, the, you know, let's all go to Florida to celebrate, you know, our senior year. You know, we had no association, the district, we had no association, or sponsorship of something like that.
So, do we just say, "The district does not support principal or with a financial assistance celebratory senior trips," and take out the cultural trips? I don't know. Because that do not occur, the district does not sponsor third-party vendors, which maybe that takes out, like, the global ed, if they're not using a third-party vendor to promote and sell cultural trips that do not, because those don't occur within the cal, I don't know. I'm just trying to...
They've not previously occurred then, but that would be new information to me if they're taking place during the year.
I thought that I had heard that that might be, but I could be wrong on that. But I just thought that they had asked about it, and they were looking into that.
What we may want to do is ask the two of you, if you can consult with our attorneys, how we best handle this at this juncture. I mean, now that...
Oh, yeah.
We're redoing, if we're advising our policy, and see what their advice is on I don't think anyone's wanting to, students never to travel, but we would need the district not to be liable for that.
Right, right, right.
And how do you define that?
Right, right. And frankly, this is an administrative procedure, so this is not even, we don't even vote on this. We do need to...
Okay, that's where I was going to go with this, is that this is, this is really a guideline.
Yeah.
This is not a policy, so...
Okay.
Yeah. This is, yeah, we can change this at any time.
We'll solve it.
You guys can do it, not you.
Yep.
Okay.
The second one, and again, these are ones that I propose we keep, is regarding religion in school, religious clubs. You know, and the highlights there is that, you know, that the public schools must remain neutral on matters of religion, that we can still have meetings, we can still have religious clubs held on school property during non-instructional time, but employees or agents of the school can be present, but only in a non-participatory manner. They can serve as monitors, if you will. You know, so, that's a kind of a question that can come up with different religious clubs that we have, but yes, we do offer them, so I'd like to keep that one. The next one, the immunity for food donors, a very popular term, particularly around this time of year, and it's, I chose to, in the red is what I wrote as the new proposed policy, but we struggled with maybe keeping some of the blue as well, but to me, it seemed kind of redundant. And the 1987 law was really just a model Good Samaritan Act that actually did not have the force of law. It wasn't until the 1996 Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act where it became law, and, you know, we'd like to make sure our club sponsors, our student activities directors know that, you know, they aren't subject to liability as long as they're acting in good faith, and good faith, and, you know, aren't trying to be harmful to others. Another policy, another policy to keep, just with regard to identification cards, that we still offer identification cards for our secondary students. There's just minor wording adjustments in that procedure. And the fifth administrative procedure, just on student government, and again, this is just a rewording that essentially promotes our student governance. It's the voice of the student in the school setting, and a liaison between the student body and the administration. So we'd like to keep those. The ones that, you know, I offer that we strike, you know, start with yearbook and senior pictures, and those have the big Xs through the pages in your packet. You know, yearbook is really not a club, it's really not an activity, you know, in some ways, it serves in our curriculum.
It's a class.
It's an elective class, so I propose we take that out. The student clubs, certainly, to me, that just seems repetitive and redundant that we have very enough. The third one that I have to take out is student volunteer, student service. Our student assistance program is no longer in existence, you know, so it doesn't really apply at all. And the last one, regarding employment of students, you know, our work permits are regulated by state law, you know, so we have no youth employment office in the district that I'm aware of. And, you know, students who need their date of birth certified and work permit signed know that they can go to their high school offices, you know, to have that taken care of. And so I offer that we strike that.
I thought they had to go to the career tech center.
It's been about three or four, maybe five years now that that's been changed, so...
Oh, now they just go...
At least four years.
Boy, my kids better stuck getting a job. Obviously, we know who doesn't have a job in the district.
They can go to either high school administration or high school offices. They do no, they no longer have to report to the career center.
Oh, okay, they get them right at the high school.
What's the long time play?
Yeah, I didn't know that.
It's been a couple, several years now that that's been changed.
Interesting.
Everyone all right with the proposed changes?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. There was a lot of cleanup on all those. I mean, it come down, this one was a brief conversation, but that doesn't reflect the amount of time it takes to get all those pages boiled down to something that's much more useful.
Last, you know, last reviewed in 1988, so it's interesting how some things have remained the same, some things have evolved, changed.
And some of them too, they get reviewed over the time, but as we were talking about recently, I'm glad that we're putting a review date on our policies now. It can be that it was reviewed and found no need for change, so it looks like we didn't touch it for 30 years. In essence, it may have been reviewed every four or five years, but I'm really glad we are going to put a review date on anything that we're not going to revise, even if it stays the same. Mrs. Bonfield?
In saving, trying to be green and save trees, since we've talked about the administrative procedures, and they are not something that we need to vote on, can we, can I instruct Mrs. Wozniak to not include the administrative procedures in our packet?
That's fine with me, seeing as we're not voting on them.
I would say, with the exception of the first one, which we've asked for some follow-up, and so we'll follow up on that first one, and then put the revise, the revision in your packet.
Good idea.
Just the first administrative procedure, that you had asked for some more follow-up.
Okay, can we just make sure in the packet that it's made clear that we're not voting, not remind us that we're not voting on that?
Okay.
Do you want to check in with Mrs. Wozniak?
Any other questions or comments on these?
So we'll offer this for further review at our next...
Right, this will be, what we only have is, right, is the new policy JH will be put on our agenda next week for first reading.
First reading.
And the administrative procedures, we don't vote on. Those are, those are just for our information only. All right? Are we all set on policy? All right, that takes care of policy. President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. It takes us to item seven, Personnel Committee. Mrs. Frank?
I don't believe we have anything. Nope.
Nothing in personnel? That'll take us to item eight, Legislative Committee. Mrs. Bradford?
Oh, there's always something going on. We had some updates in our email. We need to continue to write. Would you like to give us some more current update? Because it happens every hour, basically.
I would.
Thank you. Mrs. Oquist?
I'll be brief, President Johnson, but I'd like to just share a legislative update.
That's what Mr. Francis said.
You can count on me. There has been a flurry of activity in the lame duck session, really much to our chagrin, and certainly with disregard for the resolution passed by our district and by many districts across the state, which asks our legislators not to take any action during the lame duck period with regard to educational legislation. It's such an abbreviated period, and oftentimes, that legislation has such a direct impact on the students that we serve, on our schools, and on our staff. So we have, I have shared with you a number of updates in the past couple of weeks, and asked for our legislative advocacy on a number of different important pieces of legislation that are being considered. And I'd also like to encourage our staff, our families, and our community to also take time to contact their legislators if they have thoughts about these significant pieces of legislation, which, certainly some of which have merit to discuss and to be considered, but to be done so in a thoughtful and deliberative way, as opposed to simply, there are so many different pieces of legislation being considered well beyond education right now during the lame duck session. However, we know how impactful the passage of some of these can be, and I'd like to specifically mention the A through F accountability system, which, if passed, would enact the third accountability system in as many years. So it would be the third new accountability system in three years for school districts in Michigan. And it also ties with it the creation of a 13-member panel, who would be given the authority to oversee school policy, and oversee school policy in the state of Michigan, really essentially superseding the elected state Board of Education members. There is, there are many, many details that have not been fleshed out fully with regard to that Education Accountability Policy Committee, and we think it would be extremely prudent to step back away from that legislation, both with regard to the A through F accountability and as it's tied to the commission, to, again, give really thoughtful consideration to the tenants of those bills. Also, the bills establishing public innovative school districts, that has moved very rapidly. There are a wide variety of details, which, again, have not been determined, including requirements for state's school days and hours, how those schools would be funded, whether or not they would have to meet the same guidelines as other public school districts while taking public school funding out of the School Aid Act. So those are, again, bills which I believe are being considered tomorrow by the state legislature, and so, again, I believe you received an email, hopefully from MASB, with regard to legislative action. There's been quite a bit of anti-union legislation that really unduly hinders the work we are able to do in collaboration with our staff, and also the need to keep a close eye on the supplemental bill that really looks to redirect funds away from the School Aid Act, and take a look at revenue in a different way, and utilizing anywhere from $100 to $700 million worth of funds redirected away from the School Aid fund. And although they've talked about putting dollars back in its place for next year, it would not necessarily be guaranteed beyond that time. There's discussion about whether or not to leave universities and community colleges as part of that funding mechanism as well. And so, these are all important conversations to have, and really important dialogue for us to have within the educational community and with our legislators, but it really requires more thought than I believe they're able to give during this very abbreviated period of time. So, we need to continue to be advocates for the students that we serve, the staff that we're committed to, and certainly our schools and our districts. So, we are active on that front. We encourage you to be knowledgeable and voice your advocacy as well.
Mrs. Frank?
Mrs. Frank? Thank you. Two questions. I think what you said was so appropriate. One is, it needs to be, I think, education in Michigan, we've talked about, we need to improve in the state of Michigan, and I think that that is the thrust behind all of these move, these changes, or the rush for it. But I think what you said was so important, it needs to be a partnership between education and the legislature. And I just wondered, as the 10th largest district in the state, if anyone has reached out to you from the legislature personally to get your...
Only representing our newly-elected legislators, not any of our current...
Current, nobody.
Yes.
Okay, I just think that's...
However, we have indicated our...
Willingness.
Willingness to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I think that these conversations are so important to have, but they're so complex and so detailed, and so, there's so much at stake for these little kids, and so I think that it needs to be something that's well thought out, and not something that's pushed through, but that's part, that is done in partnership with the districts.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Burton?
Mrs. Oquist?
Yes.
Can you remind the public again where they can find our contact information for our legislators? I believe it's on the front page of our website, or a link is on our website?
I don't, I don't want to misspeak on that. So what we will do is, I will ask Mrs. Jenkins to be sure that it is evident on our website where you can go to do that. I don't know that it's on the front page currently. It may be under a quick links section, under the quick links section.
I think it's a link, yeah. It's under, other parents or community somewhere. It's a link, it's not right on the front page. Does anybody remember?
If we continue to discuss it for about one more minute, I think I may be able to phone a friend.
I might have an answer.
And get that answered.
Oh.
Anything else anyone wants to discuss while we're taking a look at that?
Anybody else have any comments? No, but, well, so I'll take up that minute. So, also, I believe if we go on the MASB website, that there is a link, a take action link...
Right.
That we can all use, not just school board members or school staff, but there's, if we could put that link additionally, which is helpful, because it allows us to take action in...
I think you just put in the person, your zip code, and it comes up with...
Your zip code, and it allows you to reach multiple legislate, legis...
Legislators.
...at a time, without having to go through and pick through and be redundant on your things. So, although, you know, it is impactful to send to each one, but I think right now, it's, they're not necessarily reading those word for word...
It's the volume.
But that, if they're inundated with a lot of information.
So it's located under, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
That's okay. If you go on our website, under the Community tab, which is one of our main tabs on the website, the, one of the first items under there is Contact Your Legislator, so that we have information linking right there. So thanks to all who, okay, thanks for all who confirmed there.
Okay.
That's it, Mrs. Bradford, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And don't just limit it to your legislators. I sent one directly to the governor.
So did I.
So, don't just...
Good idea. It's all going to end up on his desk.
It's all going to end up at his desk, exactly.
Very good. Okay, that concludes legislation.
All right, and that brings us to the end of our agenda, so, thanks for hanging in there, everybody.
So early.
Long meeting, but a good one.
Yes, thank you.
So, we're done. Good night.
Good night.